Test, test, test. At eleven o'clock.
Yeah.
All right, I think we are ready. Uh. Well, good morning, board. Welcome to our budget retreat for twenty twenty five. Uh, our budget team is suited up and ready. This is like our Super Bowl here for. And I first want to acknowledge um that the budget finance team has been working tremendously hard to prepare for this week. And we have a lot of information to share. We'll be spending a lot of fresh together over the days. Um, but we really want to just just acknowledge the the big task that we have this week. We are looking forward to sharing information from each of our departments about our budget and how it's developing for twenty twenty five. And today we're really starting with high level overview of a couple of things. We're going to start with just kind of an economic outlook and forecast for the county. Um, just making sure we're kind of grounded in what's going on in the county and what we're looking at for next year. And then we'll spend a few uh hours this afternoon going through sort of countywide um budget decisions and proposals related to our C I P, related to our debt capacity, our um employee compensation and benefits, and really those kind of organization-wide um budget um initiatives that we we want to talk through. And then in the next couple of days, we'll have presentations from every department. Our goal isn't to make yes or no decisions this week. Our goal is really to make sure that you all are informed about where we are, what the priorities are from each department, and ask any questions that you may have. And also for us to make sure we're hearing from you what your priorities are, um that those are actually going to be informing and incorporated into the budget. There will be a draft budget presented at public hearing on October fourteenth, just ahead of the October fifteenth statutory deadline. Um, and then we still have a couple of months after that, around a month after that, to work through any remaining uh budget decisions so that we can adopt our budget fully by the end of November. So that's kind of the timeline um that we're working on. So don't feel pressured this week that we have to say yes or no, or that any of these decisions um are final this week. This is really just presenting the information and making sure we're all speaking the same language and on the same page. Um, what I've mentioned to you all previously and what we've shared with our directors is we're really looking at our budget as kind of a two-year outlook this year. Um, you'll see in the presentations this morning that we have some um kind of uh information about twenty twenty six, but we also know some things about twenty twenty seven uh that are really kind of informing the way that we're approaching the budget. And so while we have a pretty stable budget in twenty twenty six, we are anticipating some changes in twenty twenty seven, and our goal above all else is to preserve our resources to take care of our people outside of our organization and to make sure that our budget ultimately is sustainable in the long term. Uh, because we know that we're going to have some ups and downs coming in the next few years. And so that's really the lens that we're using with all of our our budget decisions um this year. And I'm sure you all also have some thoughts on what that looks like for us and how we'll be prioritizing. So without further delay, I'm going to hand it over to our budget team. And we do have a guest this morning who's going to be sharing our economic outlook with us. And I will hand it over to our interim budget finance director, Marcus.
Yeah, good morning. Good to see you guys. Um, as Dion said, we have a pretty fun day, at least from our perspective. Hopefully you enjoy this and it's informative and useful as we go through the budget season. Um, to start us off, we have teed up um a local expert in the local economy in economics, um happens to work for my favorite school, the University of Colorado, Lead School of Business. But that's not why we asked him. We asked him for his expertise. Um, Richard Wobekind is here, Dr. Richard Wobekind, and uh he asked that I not read his bio. Um, but quite lengthy and distinguished, and just go ahead and turn it over.
Thank you. Well, it's a pleasure to be here again. I've been here several times over decades at this point. I've been uh sort of doing this uh economic stuff since the late nineteen eighties. And the genesis of all of the stuff that we do out of our office at the Business Research Division falls back on creating a state economic forecast in the nineteen sixties. We just uh coming up in December, we'll have our sixty-first annual forecast. And before somebody makes a wise comment, I wasn't at the first one. Uh, but I have been at well over half of them at this point in time. So uh it's it's accumulated knowledge and it's a super accumulated knowledge of the uh state economy. And one of the things that we pride ourselves on is uh in our report is we do every sector of the economy, and then we do geographic regions as well as having an overall uh state forecast. So that comes from a lot of effort on the part of a lot of people who participate in the forecast, uh but also on the efforts out of our office. So this is an unusual time. You probably have figured that out by now on your own. You don't need me to tell you this. Um, we've had, you know, tremendous um prosperity in the state of Colorado for a long period of time. And that uh prosperity has slowed fairly dramatically in the last, at this point, twenty-one months. So what you'll see is a reflection of some of that, and I'll sort of explain a little bit more about that as we go along. Uh, but the sloth, if you're not familiar with what's hanging from the tree there, is an indication of slow grow- slow. And that's that's really sort of the theme of of the overall forecast piece. So page down. No. No. Could I have that?
Sure, yeah.
That would be great. All right. So if we uh uh take this from the beginning, uh this is an uh and as I go through this, I'm going to say that uh two things. Um, I'm going to talk about the national economy and the context of the state economy. And then there are some local Adams County uh data mixed in. You should feel free to ask any question you want to ask. I can't guarantee I have an answer, but you should certainly feel comfortable asking anything. And I'm hopeful I'm providing a backdrop. Uh, what we believe we do in the Business Research Division is help business and government uh leaders um make better decisions or more better-informed decisions. The decisions are yours, but the information is something we like to provide a background. So when we do these forecasts and other things, especially when we do revenue forecasts, uh we uh look at running different scenarios, and you'll see this specifically for Adams County uh towards the end of the presentation. Uh, but we use what we typically call a baseline or the medium forecast. And then we have a more optimistic scenario and a more pessimistic scenario. And you can see uh our baseline forecast uh is certainly not a recessionary uh national economy. It's growing at about one point five or one point six percent. The pessimistic scenario, you know, if things don't go well, uh what what could happen to the economy? And and the pessimistic scenario does have a sort of a recession built in. And I only bring that up now because it'll make some sense when you see uh the forecast material for Adams County a little bit later on. But overall, our view is uh is that the economy is on a very slow footing, uh but nonetheless not recessionary kind of scenario. And that's being driven by a whole number of uh risks, if you will, to the forecast. Um, the and the risks are um let let me start by saying, when we talk about risks, we're not saying all of these are downside risks, like could make the forecast worse. They could also turn out to be upside risks, like the forecast could be better than what we have built in.
All right, I think we are ready. Well, good morning, board. Welcome to our budget retreat for 2025. Our budget team is suited up and ready. This is like our Super Bowl here for our budget team. And I first want to acknowledge that the budget finance team has been working tremendously hard to prepare for this week. And we have a lot of information to share. We'll be spending a lot of fresh together over the days. But we really want to just just acknowledge the the big task that we have this week. We are looking forward to sharing information from each of our departments about our budget and how it's developing for 2025. And today, we're really starting with high level overview of a couple of things. We're going to start with just kind of an economic outlook and forecast for the county. Just making sure we're kind of grounded in what's going on in the county and what we're looking at for next year. And then we'll spend a few hours this afternoon going through sort of countywide budget decisions and proposals related to our CIP, related to our debt capacity, our employee compensation and benefits, and really those kind of organization wide budget initiatives that we we want to talk through. And then in the next couple of days, we'll have presentations from every department. Our goal isn't to make yes or no decisions this week. Our goal is really to make sure that you all are informed about where we are, what the priorities are from each department, and ask any questions that you may have. And also for us to make sure we're hearing from you what your priorities are, that those are actually going to be informing and incorporated into the budget. There will be a draft budget presented at public hearing on October 14th, just ahead of the October 15 statutory deadline. And then we still have a couple of months after that, or about a month after that, to work through any remaining budget decisions so that we can adopt our budget fully by the end of November. So that's kind of the timeline that we're working on. So don't feel pressured this week that we have to say yes or no, or that any of these decisions are final this week. This is really just presenting the information and making sure we're all speaking the same language and on the same page. What I've mentioned to you all previously and what we've shared with our directors is we're really looking at our budget as kind of a two year outlook this year. You'll see in the presentations this morning that we have some kind of information about 2026, but we also know some things about 2027 that are really kind of informing the way that we're approaching the budget. And so while we have a pretty stable budget in 2026, we are anticipating some changes in 2027, and our goal above all else is to preserve our resources to take care of our people outside of our organization and to make sure that our budget ultimately is sustainable in the long term. Because we know that we're going to have some ups and downs coming in the next few years. And so that's really the lens that we're using with all of our our budget decisions this year. And I'm sure you all also have some thoughts on what that looks like for us and how we'll be prioritizing. So without further delay, I'm going to hand it over to our budget team. And we do have a guest this morning who's going to be sharing our economic outlook with us. And I will hand it over to our interim budget finance director, Marcus.
Yeah, good morning. Good to see you guys. As Dion said, we have a pretty fun day, at least from our perspective. Hopefully you enjoy this and it's informative and useful as we go through the budget season. To start us off, we have teed up a local expert in the local economy in economics. Happens to work for my favorite school, the University of Colorado, Leeds School of Business. But that's not why we asked him. We asked him for his expertise. Richard Wobekind is here, Dr. Richard Wobekind, and he asked that I not read his bio. Quite lengthy and distinguished, and just go ahead and turn it over.
Thank you. Well, it's a pleasure to be here again. I've been here several times over decades at this point. I've been sort of doing this economic stuff since the late 1980s. And the genesis of all of the stuff that we do out of our office at the Business Research Division falls back on creating a state economic forecast in the 1960s. We just, coming up in December, we'll have our 61st annual forecast. And before somebody makes a wise comment, I wasn't at the first one. But I have been at well over half of them at this point in time. So it's it's accumulated knowledge and it's a super accumulated knowledge of the state economy. And one of the things that we pride ourselves on is, in our report, is we do every sector of the economy, and then we do geographic regions as well as having an overall state forecast. So that comes from a lot of effort on the part of a lot of people who participate in the forecast, but also on the efforts out of our office. So this is an unusual time. You probably have figured that out by now on your own. You don't need me to tell you this. We've had tremendous prosperity in the state of Colorado for a long period of time. And that prosperity has slowed fairly dramatically in the last, at this point, 21 months. So what you'll see is a reflection of some of that, and I'll sort of explain a little bit more about that as we go along. But the sloth, if you're not familiar with what's hanging from the tree there, is an indication of slow growth, slow. And that's that's really sort of the theme of of the overall forecast piece. So page down. No. No, could I have that? That would be great. All right. So if we take this from the beginning, this is, and as I go through this, I'm going to say that two things. I'm going to talk about the national economy and the context of the state economy. And then there are some local Adams County data mixed in. You should feel free to ask any question you want to ask. I can't guarantee I have an answer, but you should certainly feel comfortable asking anything. And I'm hopeful I'm providing a backdrop. What we believe we do in the Business Research Division is help business and government leaders make better decisions or more better informed decisions. The decisions are yours, but the information is something we like to provide a background. So when we do these forecasts and other things, especially when we do revenue forecasts, we look at running different scenarios, and you'll see this specifically for Adams County towards the end of the presentation. But we use what we typically call a baseline or the medium forecast. And then we have a more optimistic scenario and a more pessimistic scenario. And you can see our baseline forecast is certainly not a recessionary national economy. It's growing at about 1.5 or 1.6%. The pessimistic scenario, you know, if things don't go well, what what could happen to the economy? And the pessimistic scenario does have sort of a recession built in. And I only bring that up now because it'll make some sense when you see the forecast material for Adams County a little bit later on. But overall, our view is is that the economy is on very slow footing, but nonetheless, not recessionary kind of scenario. And that's being driven by a whole number of risks, if you will, to the forecast. And the risks are, let me start by saying, when we talk about risks, we're not saying all of these are downside risks, like could make the forecast worse. They could also turn out to be upside risks, like the forecast could be better than what we have built in. For example, the ones in red, we think are the most significant impacts nationally. And and several of those may be significant impacts for the state of Colorado. So when we think about these risks, we think of them at the national level, the state level. And you might think about them at the local level, are we more susceptible to any of these risks? There are certainly parts of the state right now that are more susceptible at the lower, at the more localized levels. I don't think you're one of them, but there are some places that are a little bit more susceptible to some of the downside risks. So things like immigration policy to federal government restructuring, tariffs, which you're well aware of. Those are all things we're paying a lot of attention to in terms of upside or downside risk to the economy. So all of that sets the background for employment, which is the major driver. So why do we focus on this? We focus on GDP because, and the components of GDP, because they are ultimately what drives consumption level in the economy. Consumption level is a major driver, income and consumption is a major driver for things like personal income taxes. But much more importantly, for some thing, somebody like Adams County or an entity like Adams County, retail sales tax is very much driven. So state and local sales taxes are very much influenced by the overall level of activity. So we're looking at this for the state of Colorado in terms of both, for example, Colorado personal tax on income, but very much the retail sales tax that the state is generating as part of the the flow of funds for the state of Colorado. So the the bottom line here on this particular slide is that we have had very good growth in employment since the COVID recession. I originally called this the swoosh recovery, and I was branded or or accused of product endorsement. So I call this the check shape recovery. But nonetheless, when you look at this, you can see that it's increasing, still increasing through August 2025. But it's very much increasing at a decreasing rate, meaning the employment numbers have gone up much more slowly overall in 2025 than they did in 2024 and then they did in 2023. So we've had this sort of slowing of the overall picture. Also, again, we had this amazing period for Colorado, 2008 through 2013, where we were a top five state in pretty much every category, including the cost of housing appreciation. When we look at, you know, Colorado now, here's our employment growth, and we're at six tenths of a percent. And as you can see, we're in the sort of bottom half of states at this particular point in time. So we are, you know, looking at a substantially slower environment.
So I'm sorry.
No, don't be sorry.
You said the thing about economic growth, not population. We're talking economics, not democra- not population.
No, but you'll see population growth too. We've slipped in population growth too.
I just wanted to be, you know, understand that this point 6% is as our.
This is employment. Yes, this is the employment number. Yeah. So for a period of time, people use this particular data. It's called the Jolts Report, Job Opening and Labor Turnover Survey. And they produce this nationally, and they also produce this at the state level. And you'll see it a little bit later and when we get to the state data. But this is the amount of open jobs per unemployed worker. And that red line is the opening. So you can just, on the left hand graph, for just a moment, you can see how much higher the red line was than the black line. And that created a, you know, great market for unemployed people because they, there was a lot of job openings out there. There's all sorts of issues here, and I'm not dismissing them. People who are unemployed have to have the right skill sets for the jobs that are open. They have to want the jobs that are open, you know, maybe they came out of a, they came out of some sort of a tech business, maybe not at the top level, but they came out of some sort of technology space. And the job that's open is a hotel and restaurant job or whatever. So there's a mismatch. But that said, and this is important for all of us as policy people, the community colleges and and other educational institutions play a really critical role in sort of helping to match that up or producing the people with the right skill sets for the next sort of round. We have a lot of opening and openings in the trades, for example, you know, so we talk about that. And the US unemployment rate has ticked up a little bit. That's on the right hand side. The typical one that you hear quoted is the tan line on the bottom. It's up to 4.3%, but that's still not a bad unemployment rate. So we look at this and 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 we, you know, the slow job growth and and the low unemployment rate. And we say, well, that's kind of interesting. The job growth is so slow right now, but we have a low unemployment rate. So backdrop here is, and I'm going to be very careful as I'm saying this. We try to make these presentations as apolitical as possible. So I'm trying to report facts to you, not, you know, my opinions. Factually, there are 2 million less immigrants coming into the US, legal immigrants, than a year ago, year over year. So if you divide that through, that's 165,000 a month, and you, or give or take. So if you had all of those people coming in, you would need substantially more jobs to employ these people if they were coming into the country. So even with low, relatively low job growth rates, we don't see the unemployment rate taking off because we don't have that 2 million people that are not here. They didn't, you know, we're not doing that now. So said differently, we've slowed the growth of the labor force in the US and in Colorado. And in the process of doing that, it keeps, helps keeps unemployment rates low, even with a slow employment environment. Employment growth environment. So I jumped to this area, income and personal income and savings and and how we think about this. Again, with the same backdrop, this is incredibly important in terms of continued GDP growth in the economy. Also, retail sales and personal income taxes, retail sales taxes and so on, really driven off of sort of the personal income piece. And you can see that personal income is continuing to grow at a pretty healthy, it's the tan line at the top. Again, this is national, but it's continuing to grow at a healthy pace. And we continue to have the blue line, which is consumption, growing. It's growing at a much slower rate than it was, but it's continuing in a sort of a positive trend. So once, one of the reasons that we're not forecasting a recession in the economy is we still think consumption can hold up, will hold up. And that, again, is it's 70% of GDP, so it's extremely important in terms of overall GDP growth. We also see a rise in household wealth, driven by housing prices, driven by securities prices. It has been much more subdued. If you look at the end, it hasn't really, it's actually declined a little bit the last quarter based on housing and some other things. But you can see that it's been, generally speaking, in a much sort of steeper upcline. And and again, people can consume not just out of their income, but out of their wealth, right? So that's one of the ways we know people, when when wealth is increasing, people feel more comfortable spending their income on consumption goods or taking a trip, a vacation, or whatever it might be. Yes.
Thanks. Look, going back to the previous slide about looking at a personal savings rate. I mean, consumption, as you say, is is holding along with personal growth income. But with that lack of savings, I mean, doesn't, my concern is that the families that who are in such a precarious situation that, I mean, you hear, I've heard different soundbites about it saying most families cannot sustain a 1,500 or $1,000 unplanned in hit to their, you know, hit to, you know, car, car repair.
Unexpected expense.
Unexpected expense, thank you. Car repair, health bills. So so that, to me, that that seems a lot more precarious than, while the blue lines are like, okay, seem to indicate some steady, you know, some stability, that the red line makes me nervous.
Yes. So, you know, I always joke about this when I do these presentations. You might be surprised that I actually did eliminate some slides. This is not every slide that I've ever, we've ever produced or I ever used. But there are ones that look at sort of the distribution of income. There are still slides in here that address your issue. This is, this is for the entire society. It's a low rate, but it's also for the entire society. So I might have a 10% savings rate and somebody else has like almost a zero. They're living, you know, with no savings. So that it is, it is a fair, definitely a fair issue to ask. And one we pay a lot of attention to. And same thing is true for actually for household wealth. You know, it is true that, you know, two thirds of the country or more owns homes. But that said, that's a third that don't own a home, that don't get home equity and so on. So when we think about these things in terms of the distribution, and we'll talk more about that in a moment. So inflation, as you probably know, we're part, the Colorado proxy is Denver Aurora Lakewood, and you fall into that space. And but we use this for the state as well. And one of the things we've noted, after many, many, many years of Colorado having a higher cost of living, Colorado now has a lower cost of living in terms of the reported inflation rate. How, how many years? Well, 11 of the previous 14, we had a higher inflation rate prior to last year. So we had many years where we were leading the country in inflation or a very high level of inflation. And it came down to the third line down, where I have the little hand up here on the screen, the housing number. And the housing number, if you go off into the far right hand side, and again, I know most people know this, but just to emphasize this, 44% of the Consumer Price Index is in housing or equivalent housing types of pieces. So housing is a big component. It's gone up over time as it, as the prices and everything have gone up over time. And the national number is still going up at 4%. And here we are over here, Denver Aurora Lakewood, and now we're at 1.7%. So having a lower housing price appreciation is helping us in the in the calculation here. After many, many years, being very much hindered by that exact same line, we had much higher housing price appreciation than the country as a whole. Our our numbers were much larger. So again, last sort of piece on on this, what does all of this say in terms of income, in terms of wealth, in terms of all of the things that I've mentioned? Well, we had this incredible ramp up in in retail sales that occurred from, I would argue, you know, people having, wanting to spend money after they were, you know, couldn't go out and do stuff. But on top, so they started buying trampolines and and everything under the sun that they could put in their yard and a travel trailer and on and on. But, you know, we still see, we've stayed sort of on this upper, upper kind of consumption line, which is kind of interesting. We've kind of shifted the whole consumption thing up. But year over year, we're at, you know, nationally at 5%, and month over month is six tenths of a percent. So you look at that number and you say, at least nationally, it looks like consumption's in pretty good shape. And that's, of course, one place we're going to measure. We also are concerned about how confident people are and businesses are. And I don't, I'm not going through all of the indices we look at. But we do know consumer confidence has been kind of modest. The concerns about, in particular, whether with the job growth slowing and what might be causing the job growth and the prospects of jobs slowing somewhat, we've seen that impact consumer confidence. But another thing that comes out of the survey, and one I guess I'd like to highlight, just in terms of how you think about interest rates and monetary policy and those types of things that come in, obviously, when you think about budget. One of the signals that's coming out of these surveys of consumers is that they're anticipating higher inflation a year from now. Significantly higher inflation. So instead of going from, you know, roughly 3% where we are now and and getting down to the 2% that the Federal Reserve is hoping for, the these surveys are showing consumers saying it's going to go to 4 or 4 and a half percent, going in the wrong, wrong direction. And they could be totally wrong. It's not, are the consumers right? But this is being read by the Federal Reserve, and they're worried about consumers having high inflationary expectations. They're, they're just, that's, that's like a flashpoint for the Federal Reserve in decision making. So I just bring that to your, you know, to to just for a point of discussion before we sort of start, start talking about these interest rates in the in the grand scheme of things. So we've seen a leveling off and 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 the 10 year rate has leveled off. Will that help? It seems like it's helping a little bit with the housing situation. Of, we've, of course, had the announcement of the first quarter point reduction. At the time the quarter point reduction was announced, I think prognosticators in general were anticipating another 25 to 50 basis points this year. Since that point in time, Fed Chair Powell has come back out and said, this is not guaranteed. We're going to keep watching the data and we'll, and we'll see how things go. We're not guaranteeing that we're going to move down more. But what I would like to highlight is whether or not they move that short term rate down. There's no guarantee that the 10 year rate comes down. And there's no guarantee, therefore, that mortgage rates come down. The short term rate and the long term rate are not necessarily coupled. And the things that I would focus more on, if I was thinking about interest rates and financing, are the level of federal debt, who's buying the government debt as it's going to the market, what kinds of issues are going on there. So to me, that's more significant than the Federal Reserve, you know, lowering short term rates in terms of what the 10 year rate and the 30 year fixed mortgage rate will be. And for those not in housing finance, the 10 year rate is sort of the, what sets the 30 year mortgage rate. And the reason is the average American keeps, holds their home for 10 years. So it's a relatively safe thing for the mortgage companies to think about in terms of, you know, setting a rate that is usable, if you will, in the overall scheme. So to go to the earlier question about, are we worried about anything in finance? This slide sort of tells an interesting story. This is the loan delinquencies across all different categories. The one in blue that is just skyrocketing up is student debt. Again, that was put on hold for a number of years, and this is the first quarter that it was, came back as being reported. So that's why you see this sort of dramatic jump up. It's still at a rate lower than it was going into COVID, but not a whole lot lower. A more concern are the other categories, like the tan category going up, which is the other, the gray, the credit card debt going up. And again, commenting on earlier issues, people are making decisions here on what they can afford to spend money on. And it is causing a lot of concern amongst subprime borrowers. And so there have been issues with subprime borrowing. And if you follow this, just, I think, now slightly over a week ago, JP Morgan wrote off an enormous amount of subprime auto loan debt that came to the marketplace and said, we have to write this off. So there's clearly some weaknesses in terms of, you know, some strata of income in the US. And that's what we sort of say is reflective here, those, those weaknesses. So moving for a moment, we move on to Colorado and have a little bit more of a discussion. So we're looking at the overall picture of Colorado and the employment and the economy. And, you know, I was mentioning to you, we had, that we had a 15 year run where we were in the top, you know, five and six of every, of all these different categories. This is the most recent year over year we have for a wide array of categories. And you can see, for example, the employment number that was on that other slide is 34th in the country. You can see that the GDP, the output growth for the state is right in the middle, 23rd. Per capita personal income growth, 31st, personal income growth 30th. So we've really slowed, but we're growing. You know, put this up here and say, you know, this is not a recession. This is a slower, much slower growth than we've been used to, but it's definitely not recessionary numbers. And you could highlight a couple of these. If you go down to per capita personal income, 85,000. So that's every woman, child, man in the, in the state is averaging $85,000 of income. And that's the eighth. And that's the eighth highest state in the country for that. And if you go down to average annual pay, somewhat linked, but not completely. You can see we're at 81,000 plus, and that's the seventh highest average pay in the country. So we're a relatively wealthy state and we're a relatively high paying state. And, you know, and some would say, well, we have to be because our housing costs are, and other things are expensive. But I think those are, you know, to me, those are somewhat our pride points. Also, a little further down here, I know there's just a lot of initials on here. L F P R is labor force participation rate. And we continue to have one of the highest labor force participation rates in the country. We're sixth. We were fourth about a year ago, but we have very high labor force participation. Not unusual in a state that's highly educated. And we have the second highest number percentage wise of college graduates in the entire country. So what we know fundamentally, going through all levels, you know, college and advanced degrees, but associate's degrees and high school. Nothing correlates better with income levels than education. You know, high school graduates make more than people who dropped out of high school, associate's degrees and so on. Nothing correlates better with unemployment rates than education level. The higher the education level, the lower the unemployment rate. So it is, you know, someone who's out of the education mold. I, I, I view education as sort of the great equalizer. So if anything is going to, you know, raise the average prosperity of a person in the country. You know, for me, that, that's sort of the way, you know, that's what I can help contribute to, if you will. So interestingly enough, for that 15-year period I mentioned, we were number one in home price appreciation for the entire country. And now if you go down a couple, the next line down, labor force, home price growth. You can see index growth for a quarter, we were 47th, but year over year, we're last in the country. The slowest home price appreciation in the U.S. right now. You know, good news in the sense, you know, it's still positive, but you know, good news in the sense of helping keep home prices down. And, and in a, an environment that, you know, one of the suggestions of why the state economy is slowing as much as it is, is it's become less affordable. And so if that is the case, and if housing prices aren't rising very much, you know, our relative position in terms of home, home cost becomes a little bit better. Did you have a question?
Yeah.
You had a question?
I did have a question. Thanks Chair. In looking at this, you made a comment around the greatest equalizer, the thing that provides greatest economic mobility is higher education. And I'm just kind of curious if you could break that out because over the decades, people have had a lot of opinions on what type of higher education enriches wealth and stability for an individual and their family. And I'm just kind of curious if you could have any comments on, is that all fields, that all education? We, we've seen a lot of different trends over the years, like what type of education do you see is that great wealth equalizer?
Yeah, so there's, this is a good point. So let me start by saying, the statement was education, not just higher education. The more educated that someone is, the better their lot in life has been over the last 50 years. And it's still true in the last decade. But you're, you're raising the valid issue, how much debt do people take on? If they took on a lot of debt in the process of getting, let's say, a college degree or a graduate degree. Do all of the-
And some private college associates as well.
Yeah. So do all of those break even? And I, I've looked at some of them. And I looked at, for example, my daughter got a master's in public health with a specialization in nutrition. And I told her before she entered this, I said, you're doing this because you love this. Oh, I was very serious about this. I said, this is not one of the areas where you're going to get a, a har, a high ROI. You're likely to be working, which she wound up. DC public schools and then the San Francisco public school system, not the highest paying jobs. It, the degree is not inconsequential. It's two years. It takes money to do that. So you can do the assessments in general. Frankly, STEM degrees tend to have har, higher ROIs. But not everybody wants to be necessarily a civil engineer or electrical engineer. I mean, the world needs other types of things. But, but just on average, I guess you're, you're hanging me up on my average comment. On average, the returns are still great to, and, and they still have been assessed very recently. The returns are still high.
Just, just so that, from my own understanding, asking a follow-up question. So it feels like it's fair to say, like, year over year, decade over decade, the trends of what's going to have that ROI move a little bit. Like what might have been a really profitable degree 15 years ago is less profitable now as, you know, systems and economic factors change. And so like, I just so that, like, I understand, like, any basic education, high school completion, which you did mention, I think was the thing you really named a few minutes ago before I asked my question. You know, it's pretty standard. To get a job at McDonald's, they want a high school diploma, like lots of people want that. But more education has to be smartly acquired, but generally speaking, more education is better for economic outcomes. And that could include the trades, like becoming a skilled carpenter or welder or electrician. But that could also include becoming a really good CPA or civil engineer or one of those fields as well.
Couldn't agree more. And, and to just add a slight bit to that of, right now, for, in the higher headspace, of course, this is getting somewhat confounded by AI applications and which industries do they, you know, are, are most likely to be impacted, especially at the entry level. Because we're putting people in and largely in entry level jobs with undergraduate degrees. So we're spending a lot of time looking at that. But the one thing we also know, and the trades are really good at this. If you can do experiential learning, you increase the likelihood of placement dramatically. And so, you know, we, I'm not, this isn't talking about leads, but we're putting a huge focus on that. We actually just opened up and got an endowment to open a center for just for experiential learning. And the last two years, and I think it's a, a sort of AI related, all of a sudden employers started saying, you know, what kinds of things have you done that are, you know, experiential? There's been just a big rise in that. And we've also had people have them say, well, it's an entry level position, but we want one or two years of work experience. So you're asking a college person to come out with one or two years of work experience. You know, what is that? An entry level position? So it, it, that's really muddied the waters as well. So reinforcing your last comment, I guess, it's a rapidly changing environment. But I still believe across all of the spectrums, better skillsets, better outcomes.
Thank you.
Yep. So here's the Colorado change in population. And this is from the state demographer's office. And we are of the belief this may get revised down. We've gotten indications that they may be revising down their population growth. And some of that relates to my earlier comment, meaning that there's less international immigration to the U.S. and therefore less international people moving around the country. So it's directly linked. Historically, if all these sort of tan bars back here, we had a relatively small percentage of international. The component of Colorado's net migration was largely domestic and pretty small amounts that were international. But in the most recent years, 23 and 24, that flipped. We had a lot, much larger percentage of international, much larger piece of the component. So if that trend were to continue and we have less international migration to the U.S., our view is, and there are the demographers and they're going to do the forecast. But that's part of a reason why you might revise this down. The other thing we know from decades of doing this, decades and decades, when you're an outperforming economy, like back here in the 1990s, where we were here from 2008 all the way to 2023. The economic part of the economy helps drive the migration to the state. You have better job prospects than many other parts of the country. We've always had the luxury of being able to see mountains out in the distance and a quality of life, you know, and, and so all of those things we believe have been positive sort of drivers to migration. So now we worry a little bit that we're going to see sort of the downside. Not the downside, but this, a slowing based on our underperformance of the economy in terms of new job growth. Your, this is again from the demographer's office. I'm not making these, we are not making these slides up. So you can see, there was a fair amount of net migration being allocated to you for the next four years based on their population projections. So I guess I'm going to say totally not, with no knowledge, I'm going to say the following statement. I would not be surprised if your demographics got, if they, if they reduce the state number, I suspect that your, your local number is going to go down too. But I have no inside information, but I, I, I'm pretty sure they're going to revise down their, their state level number. So this kind of shows you where we are and how people have been kind of somewhat shocked about the economy. You know, you can go all the way back to sort of 2000 and after the financial crisis. And you can see how strong the employment growth was. And then we had COVID, that big downward in 2020. But then since COVID, we've had very strong job growth in 21, 22, 23. And then 24, it slowed a lot. It was the slowest in, in, you know, over 10 years. And we were like, wow, other than COVID, slowest in 10 years. And now the 2025 numbers look like in our forecast, they're going to come in at about six tenths of a percent or about 15,000 jobs. And we haven't done 2026 yet, but we're thinking similar kinds of numbers for 2026 based on what the model's showing. Unless there's something that really creates a growth at the national economy at a higher level. It looks like continuing in a pretty, you know, sort of soft spot. And some of it's labor force, you know, we don't have a, a growth in, in the labor force. Our labor force growth has basically flattened. But some of it has to do with just, again, slower national economy driving it. So here we have the MSAs, if you care, you're of course in Denver Aurora. Centennial piece in terms of where you, you largely show up. But you can see the different MSAs and the job growth. And you can see quite a number of our MSAs are showing year over year negative job growth, including the Denver MSA. So this is the major metropolitan statistical areas. The data reporting on those is better than it is at the individual county level, or it, it, it comes out more frequently and it has, you know, a little bit less of a lag. So we tend to pay attention to the MSA data, just in terms of giving people a current feel of where we are. So here's this labor market slide again, based on the job openings and labor turnover survey. And here you have the U.S. on the left side. So the U.S. has 0.99 jobs open for every unemployed person. They, it finally went negative after years and quite a few number of years of being positive. Here's Colorado on the right-hand side. We're down to 0.8 available jobs for each unemployed person. And you can see how dramatic this, you know, how much different it is. Two years ago, this number was two and a half open jobs for every unemployed person. And now we have less than one open job for every unemployed person. So this kind of highlights supply and demand and the slowing, you know, labor market that we've seen in the state. Where are these jobs? And this is, you know, state level, healthcare and social assistance, that's probably not surprising anybody. Social assistance in particular has continued to be extremely strong. State as state government has been a large increase. I don't know that that can possibly sort of, or will continue with the state budget issues that have been reported. We had, you know, a lot of state level hiring, hiring. Then you can see things like accommodation and food services, that it's important here in Adams County. Transportation and utilities, I'll show you that in a minute too, also important. So you can see the areas that have done well. And then you can see a number of areas at the bottom that have actually, you know, lost employment, retail, wholesale trade and so on. And federal government employment, that's probably not surprising. There was a point not too long ago, I, I'm jumping around a little bit, but there was a point not too long ago with local government growth year over year was quite strong. We saw local governments doing a lot of hiring, backfilling jobs that had gone unopened and so on, as the economy slowed for other types of jobs. But we've seen that slowing down quite a bit. And you probably are reading the headlines in the papers or seeing this on broadcast media. But some of the locales that aren't benefiting from positive budget news like you are, are, are struggling to maintain labor force. They don't want to lose people that they want to keep, that they need, they know they need to give raises or they're going to lose people. But they also are constrained just based on the amount of cash flow that they have to work with. So here you have your number overall, year over year for Adams County. The, this is, you're up 1.6%, the state's up as of last, what I showed you on that slide, six tenths of a percent. So you're doing quite a bit better in terms of total employment numbers than the state is. That may not surprise you. And your five largest private sector contributors are the ones here in blue. So transportation and warehousing, of course, you're very familiar with that important role it has here. And, you know, including, you know, and support of the airport, but all of the trucking and all of the other stuff that's actually in Adams County, proper construction, you're, you overshare in terms of construction. Healthcare, I think has to, some of this has to be insurance coming into play. Retail and then accommodations in food services, restaurants, hotels and so on. On the right-hand side, you can see the components of state and local and federal and, and their relative share of your overall employment. And you have a pretty big share of state and I'm, I don't have the answer to this, but I'm thinking that's insurance too. That's the CU employment piece that's still listed under state government and is a chunk of that. I'm sure that's got to have to be, that has to be where you have so much state employment relatively. But this just gives you a picture, you know, what's, what's most important to you in terms of job categories? And you can sort of see the various pieces there. So labor, labor force, employees, jobs and proprietors. So your labor force is actually down slightly year over year. I, I didn't over emphasize this, the state went to zero as of August. You're slightly down, so you have a slight number of, of reduction in labor force, but you've had good employment growth. And your unemployment rate has really come down, six tenths of a percent in the last year. So you're bucking the Colorado trend in general. More job, job growth faster, unemployment rate dropping more. So those are all good things.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Can we go back two slides to the, our employment composition? Can we understand in the green, what is next to arts? What is HQ?
Headquarters.
Okay, headquarters, right. So are we showing, so Adams County employment composition is higher in the arts than it is in agriculture? Is that what?
Yeah, arts, entertainment is higher here than what?
Ag.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure I was, I understood that.
But that's a good question. Let's, so this, let me, no, 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 stay with this, stay with this. So let's just use education for a second. It's higher than education. So that's private education, not public education. So it's neither K through 12 nor community college, anything that state government is showing up over here in state that you have in Adams County. But to go to your specific piece, agriculture is, so agriculture- agriculture is not covered employment in general. So these are people that would be in agricultural manufacturing. It's not farms per se. It may be covering, covering Tanaka Farms like store, but it's not covering all the people working at Tanaka Farms or any of the other places that you have. So that's, that is the, I'm sorry, that's the common confusion with agriculture because it's uncovered. So when we, you, anybody who works in business, on a quarterly basis, you have to fill out something that your unemployment insurance filing for all the employees that you have. And that's called QCEW, quarterly census for wage and, and employment and wages. And so if you're, you own a restaurant, you have to be putting in unemployment insurance and so on. You have to report every month how many people you have in and you, and you pay unemployment insurance to the unemployment insurance on. Agriculture has been exempt from unemployment insurance like forever. So that's why it doesn't show up in the quote covered employment.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. All right. So I'm going back to where we were and looking at the time, I guess we're okay, doing okay. So average annual salary, again, on the left-hand side, this is total wages are up five point four percent. So you can think of that as, you know, five plus percent growth. Even with inflation being two percent or whatever it is, you're still talking about real growth in the total amount of wages in the county. And of course, that would be something that we would think about in terms of driving retail and other types of, you know, consumption types of things. So that's very solid. And then in terms of average annual pay, up three point eight percent, which turns out to be twenty-seven hundred. This is the average annual increase. And this is again, three point eight percent in a context of year-over-year, you know, roughly two point one percent for inflation in the area. So better than inflation. For, and that's on average. So that's, the average worker is better off than they were a year ago, at least in terms of real wages. Okay, a few more things. So construction, this is the, these are the Colorado numbers. And you can sort of see it's trending down, and this has been a very difficult time for Colorado construction, and you have a big component in construction. We have underperformed the nation for the last several years. High mortgage rates really were very impactful to the state, given the cost of housing. Here's Adam, Adams County's numbers for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. And then you can see twenty-five year-to-date, and you're up dramatically. And in particular, you have a big jump in this tan area, which is non-residential, which would be commercial warehouse, on and on and on. Everything, residential's in blue at the bottom, that's housing. And then the top one is, non-building is infrastructure. So your big increase by far that's been permitted is in the non-residential. And people are nodding, so I suspect people know what those things are. I had a few of the projects on a piece of paper, but it's not with me. So, so, but you can sort of see what those, those pieces are. In terms of Colorado value of construction overall, again, through, we're down during the same period. So you're once again outperforming the state fairly significantly. And then your county value of construction, or I did this, okay. So residential permits, here we are overall, and I'm, I'm pleased to say, back when we released our forecast, the committee was suggesting an increase for twenty twenty-five. I do believe they, they believe that mortgage rates were going to come down. And they based their forecast, forecast based on lower mortgage rates. We, of course, had not seen very much of that until recently, we've seen a little bit. But I have to say, you know, back in June, it looked like we had dismal, dismally overforecast. And now through August, we've seen quite an uptick in terms of overall residential permitting activity year-to-date, and particularly in single family. We see a lot of this from the big developers. They figured out a way to do alternative financing. And obviously, Colorado is a place that still has a shortage of housing units. So this is a positive thing. And here's the total building permits issued, and you can see you were also up for twenty twenty-five year-to-date. And you're also up ever so slightly in single family. But the bigger jump is in multifamily permits and just in terms of Adams County proper. And this again is through August, so eight months, year-to-date, January through August. So here's this home price thing, and here, here's the various counties and where they sit on this. This is the one-year price change. And I told you, overall for the state, it was just slightly positive, but you can see a lot of the MSAs are still, you know, positive year-over-year through the middle of the year. Four Collins being the exception, Denver Aurora, you know, very flat. And then you can sort of see the upward, the upward trends a little further to the left. But still, everything down below five percent, four percent is like the highest appreciation year-over-year. So I didn't, I, I mentioned to you from two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty-three, we had the number one home price appreciation for the fifteen-year period. That number was almost seven percent annual increase in home prices for fifteen years. So even if you don't compound it, you can add seven fifteen times and you can, that tells you how much home prices have gone up and how dramatically home prices have gone up. And that was, you know, part of what has been an issue a little bit with leaving things behind. So here we are, and although, you know, Den is in Den, you've obviously have huge impacts. I called the DIA and someone called me out and said, you know, it's going to be hard. I was here when it was built. It's DIA to me, but it's Den. Okay, so the new campaign, it's Den. So Den has had, you know, a remarkable amount of growth. And, and you probably, although it doesn't show up in your permitting, you probably, your construction firms are probably benefiting from all of the construction at the, at the airport. What we've seen is this incredible increase in volume. And this increase in volume actually for this year is down slightly. So we have started to see some of the discretionary spending on travel decline. You'd expect that in a slower economy, in an uncertain economy. And nationally, we're seeing a decline in international travel and domestic travel. And here, looking at this picture, you know, right now, Denver is, is bucking that trend. We have had an increase of five point seven percent in international travel. Our decline has only been in domestic travel. So less domestic travel, and of course, a lot of it is a credit to the airport for attracting so many more international flights and airlines. And so they're, you know, helping to buck that. One of the things you would see, which is not here, when we cut this down. So you see this increase and you see the increase over here on the right-hand side, year-over-year, over-year. It is being generated by people flying through the airport as opposed to flying to or from the airport. Originating and destination is flat. So when I look at that, certainly it's generating jobs. And it's a, it's an economic engine, and it has been an economic engine since the day it went in. And it's certainly the connectivity makes it great. And it is the largest hub for United, for Southwest, for Frontier and the entire country. So it has a lot of prominence in employment and so on. But I would argue that people going through the airport are not as valuable as people getting on and off the planes at the airport. You know, more visits, more tourism visits, business visits, all of those kinds of things. So I'm not going to complain. I'm just going to say, I, I wish we had, you know, a little bit more our originating and destination sort of travel to the airport. But again, you're adding all of this international, people are flying through, they're landing here, and then they're going to Omaha or some, you know, someplace else, or to Grand Junction, or, you know, so they're just, all of those people are, even if they're getting out of, off the plane in Colorado somewhere, they're not getting off the plane in, in Denver. So that's showing there. And here's our monthly sales tax collections, and I showed you the US was sort of five percent year-over-year. Here's Colorado through June. The data lags a little bit. And June itself, the month year-over-year is up one point five percent. But if you do the trailing twelve months, it's up one point one percent. So said differently, the sales taxes are not rising, and this is nominal, they're not rising as fast as the inflation rate is. And which-
Can I ask a question about this?
Sure.
There, every year, there appears to be a pretty significant spike. You, yeah. Would, is that consistently the same month? And which month is it? Or is it just like every once in a while, we get a spike?
So it's typically December.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah, and you'll, you, you could kind of see it in, in, in the slide I'm going to show with your local data. But it's very cyclical, and you tend to have holiday shopping tends to be pretty dominant, depending on the length of the holiday season, where, where all of that shows up. So moving just a minute for the forecast types of things, I'm not describing any of the numbers. They're coming from the staff, the people who know what they're talking about. I'm just giving you a little bit of a backdrop of how we do this, how our office helps with this. So you may remember from the very, the original GDP slide, which was the first or second slide on the presentation, I showed something that said optimistic, baseline and pessimistic. And you have the same thing, those three scenario runs for the revenue forecast. So, so we're, we're doing that, we're trying to forecast the revenue. What's different about this slide is you see a high and a low. So off of this medium or baseline forecast in the middle, the high and the low are the confidence interval on the forecast. So there's, they're the statistical confidence interval. So, you know, we believe sixty-eight percent of the time or whatever, it's going to show up between these two boundaries. And of course, you go out to twenty thirty-four, and that's pretty big. But, you know, you go back here on those, the, the distance between the top line and the bottom line, not, not that dramatic when you, you go back to sort of the early scenario. So that's the, and of course, we do this, and this is the cyclicality that you just sort of talking about. And we produce something like this, but more important than the graph is the actual numbers and how they fit with what staff is doing and running and believing. And that's what I'm sure they'll talk to you about today. So with that, my end, my comments are, here's a few things in addition to the delinquencies with credit cards and so on. We try to pay attention to a few things to make sure, to make sure that, you know, life isn't, you know, we're not missing anything. And for a number of years, we had bankruptcy filings down post-COVID with the additional funding that was coming from various sources and so on. And twenty twenty-four, that spiked up quite a bit. You heard about this in terms of things like restaurant closings and various, you know, Denver, but at other places as well. We started to see, without the return to office in a number of different areas, we started to see some of the support businesses there closing. So we have seen this, and year-to-date through the first half, we're actually up ever so slightly. So twenty twenty-four was up quite, you know, dramatically and higher than pre-COVID. Twenty twenty-five is up slightly compared to twenty twenty-four. So again, we follow this closely. But we also produce a report out of our office with the Secretary of State's office. We do a quarterly report on business filings, and in that data, we look at delinquencies in terms of the filings for very, all these different things, foreign companies, LLCs, nonprofits. So it's more, it's extensive in terms of the different types of companies we're looking at, corporate and so on. And this data is really flat. So this data doesn't give us the, the same sort of concern that the bankruptcy filing does. It really paints a little bit better story in terms of the health of the economy. We'll, we'll know, we'll come up with another quarterly report here in about two more weeks or three more weeks. But, but that data, this data doesn't look as bad as the bankruptcy data. And then we do our own Leeds Business Confidence Index. It will be released on Thursday of this week, October first, I think it's Thursday, or Wednesday of this week. And we put that out the first day of each quarter. So January one, April one, and so on. And so October is our fourth quarter index, and we, we did see a bounce back after the election. I think business in general felt a little bit more optimistic about the quality of regulatory environment vis-à-vis business. And we did see a jump up, then we saw a dramatic drop-off after tariffs and healthcare and some of the other things that, you know, have been announced. We saw a lot of, at least in our business survey, a lot of negative reaction to that and a, a big drop-off in terms of overall confidence. But I, I leave you with this sort of note and the troubling, well, being negative, of course, when I'm not excited about that, you don't want businesses to be so pessimistic. But the other piece for me is that if you look all the way back in time here, the tan line, which is Colorado, is higher than the blue line, which is the US as a whole. Now, again, two thousand and eight to two thousand and twenty-three, there was really good reason for that because we were outperforming everybody. But just generally, Colorado businesses tend to feel better about Colorado. That reversed in the last couple of quarters. They're actually more optimistic about the national economy than they are about the state economy. And whether that's being driven by their actual business conditions they're facing, or whether that's being driven by, I'm trying to think this through myself. Is it being driven by the fact that they think the state's more susceptible to some of the policy changes? You know, some of the things we have invested in as a state are some of the things that are policy-wise not in favor right now, like renewable energy as an example. So is that it? Is it, you know, we'll know more this time on the one coming out. Is it Space Command? I mean, I, I don't know. Is it the fact that they feel like our state's at a relative sort of disadvantage? Or is it because they're just seeing business slowing? But it is an unusual occurrence to have them less optimistic about the state economy than the national economy. So if anybody wants any of this, you can get to it easily through this QR code. And anybody else who's listening or watches this, you can get to any of our stuff that we do. We have a pretty extensive website where we do this stuff, as well as doing dashboards for a lot of other entities with economic and, economic and fiscal data. The Secretary of State's, we, we update their website every month, and they have a lot of great economic information there as well. So I'm closing. I think I stayed within my hour. But are there any more questions or are people like bored to tears or, you know?
I ask those you're involved.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I, I don't need additional questions. Thank you for answering questions that came up as we were moving along. It's really helpful to see kind of the big picture with, as in that line of like asking questions as we go along, that last one, which is confidence survey. I have been anecdotally hearing for a while that we might have like, just like shot the moon a little bit in Colorado and like given the cost of housing and given some of the industries that are here. Like, it's not that, I do see that people are not expecting growth, but that's because there, it feels like there's an expectation that we've achieved, at least as a state, quite a lot economically. And I'm just kind of curious like what that tension is, like, where do we go from here when housing prices are already so inflated? And salaries are already quite inflated, like you have to have quite a good salary to make it in Colorado. We, we've observed that in our data just for Adams County as well. If you're already, you're basically six figures to care for a family, that's a lot. Can't, you know.
So
Where do we go from here? We're not Silicon Valley. Or what does that look like?
So this is a good question and not everybody agrees on this. To be, you know, honest, I mean, I, I talked to a lot of people about this. I mean, I, I think the future is like super bright. I'm worried about now.
Okay. What does that mean?
Uh, I think the industries.
Meaning when?
Yeah. Yeah. I'm, I'm worried about, um, continued economic growth, about some of the industries that are going to be under a little bit more stress. But again, not a political statement. I don't know any company that's in climate that doesn't think climate's here to stay. I mean, that it may not be federally funded, but it's not a problem that we're going to sort of walk away from. I think quantum and aerospace and biosciences are all super strong here still. I think we've done a pretty nice job as, and I give a lot of credit to the community colleges and others in terms of figuring out workforce training. Uh, so when I say I'm worried about now, I'm worried about having enough jobs now that we keep sort of the momentum and that we figure out affordability a little bit more.
Yeah.
Because, you know, someone can come in and, you know, use a word like quantum and then someone says, describe what this is. And, you know, everybody a PhD physicist. And like 60% of the jobs are not PhD physicists. They're going to be, they're going to be manufacturing jobs. You're going to need electricians.
Right.
You're going to need people who work on, you know, they're, they're really good jobs and they're not like PhD jobs. And so I think as those types of things take off, I think the state will be in great shape. And as far as I can tell, the aerospace industry is not leaving. They may take some of the headquarters to another location, but they're leaving their R and D and their other people in place. And I think that's another industry, the industry of the now, but also the future for sure. And so I think the state's on pretty good footing there. And, you know, we're not going to be uneducated tomorrow and, you know, not everybody's going to move out or whatever. So, so having that, and I think we're still desirable to high tech kinds of industries. But I think there's a lull in high tech hiring right now. And I think that's really what has caused the slowdown. We've seen some of the business tech firms that, the consulting firms, they grew like incredibly. They ramped up like super fast in 2021 and 2022, people were working from home. We have to figure all of this out. And they added so many consultants here and nationally. And then you see those same firms right now, they've had hiring freezes for almost two years, or they've actually had some reduction in force. And so, um, where, so where we were and are very heavily, there's a category of jobs called professional and business services. Colorado has dominated the growth in that area for about a 10 year period. And those are the same jobs that are being, so we averaged 15,000 jobs for like five years in a row, a year. And then the last two years, we've lost like 5,000 a year. So we've seen the cutback in that sector. So, um, so yeah, I'm, I fit more in the category of weathering the storm. I do think efforts at affordable housing are continuing on and they are almost everywhere in the state right now. I think that's super important. You know, just figuring out what that is, whether it's tiny homes or whatever it might be, but figuring out how to do that. And some of it, you probably saw the report that came out, but just the cost of a lot and the water and the development and everything is, is pretty substantial. So, um, I, I think figuring out how we can, are there ways to address that? You know, a lot of communities and I, I'm not faulting them or, you know, growth has to pay its own way. Well, okay, but that doesn't necessarily sync with affordable housing. I mean, those two goals are sort of at odds with each other, right? If, you know, you're going to fully load the cost of all of services onto an individual lot. So.
Thank you.
Sure.
So thank you. So the, the home price index growth, we're, we're 50 now. So we're of all, meaning our home prices have, are flatter than.
We have the slowest year over year home price growth of any state in the country right now.
That's a new, that's a new development.
Yes, the most recent year. That said, and someone said it differently a moment ago. That doesn't take the price of the home down to what it was 15 years ago. It just means we're, we're, we're not going up nearly as rapidly as other parts of the country.
And is that going to, is that, is that, I mean, it would seem to me that that's a good thing, but when does that become less? I mean, when does that become staying at number 50, if that's where we stay or? I'm just curious what you think going forward, like if we're going to stay there or how that helps or hurts us if we stay in that position.
So I think it brings a, it would bring it, well, put downward pressure on home prices. I mean, there are people selling for less than they thought their home was worth, you know, or should sell for, whatever you want to call it. It, it, so that brings your housing market a little bit more into balance and maybe some of the frothiness is gone. But, you know, you bought your house for 400,000 and, and you think it's worth 800,000 and it's only worth 700,000. You're still okay, right? You still have equity and you still, you're still fine or 650 or whatever. The, uh, the issue is if you bought the house for 800,000, like in 2008 or you, and, and now it's worth 600,000 and you can't walk from your mortgage or whatever. And we don't have, very fortunately, you know, a lot of people refinanced at very low interest rates. And, and we had the appreciation. So we don't really have a lot of homes that are in sort of that category of, of, you know, fear. And so there's, all of that is a, a good thing. It's missing from the banking system. So even if housing prices go down a couple of percent or 5% or whatever, it's not going to be like a disaster for the financial markets. And so that's the, that's the reason I don't worry about it as much.
But does it, but does it tight, continue to tighten up the housing market? If people are not moving because of, because, you know, and that, because we are, because we're underbuilt, we've been underbuilding. And that's, so that, that's what I was talking about, the impact on that.
Yeah. And, and a lot of places, you know, without getting into sort of Richard's personal views of the world. But a lot of places that are very, very nice places in Colorado, people came in with a lot of money and they're actually not in the workforce. They're just living in this place. And in many places, they're only living in this place for three or four months a year. And that's, you know, in terms of affordable and workforce related stuff, that's, that's a killer. Like, I don't know, Summit County or, you know, I can, I can pick a few of these. I mean, it's really, really difficult to figure out how you can house a workforce. When people, and they don't even, you know, if they're not there for half of the year, then they're not using local services, you know, not going to restaurants, not doing retail. So.
Thank you. So that obviously in Adams County, so that, that would seem to be, I mean, while we're still affected by the overall housing market.
Right.
It seems like we might be have a little more.
Yeah, you, well.
Housing, I don't know.
Yeah, no. Yeah, no, I, I think you became a very affordable alternative. You know, I mean, it sounds silly because housing prices are so expensive, but you became an affordable alternative. You're close enough, all of it is close enough. You know, to, to the metro area. I mean, you can go, even go further out and you see people, it's developing further out because it's affordable alternative for development, you know? So I don't, I don't put you in that category. You know, I, when I was talking to the folks in Erie without talking to the council and their stuff, budget stuff. I mean, they have a lot of housing planned for the next X years and, and the developers will keep telling them that they're going to go ahead with this stuff. And I said, you know, I personally, I'd be a little cautious because if they don't start to see the population growth in the state or something. These people are business people. I'm, I like them. They're not, I'm not anti, you know, developers. But, uh, they're not going to make a stupid decision if they don't think they can, you know, they bought the land, but they're not going to start building houses if they don't think they can sell them. So I think that's the caution, but you, you've, you've slowed down. I mean, you were going gangbusters for a while. Yeah. All right.
Okay. So that's why, Steve, are you there? Steve in the sky.
Good.
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh.
Yes.
Yes.
My, my question, you've actually kind of hit on a few of these things when talking about, um, the use of, uh, the, the mountain communities, the, um, non-residential visitors who take up residential spots. But one of the things that, coming back from the Metro Chamber, um, Leadership Exchange trip, one of the things you hear quite often is how Colorado is losing its ranking as far as being business friendly or attractive. How does that play into some of these, these policies when we conflict with affordability versus some of these more progressive uh, policies that tend to put more of that burden onto those businesses?
No comment.
Uh, that's why I asked you.
The, uh, you know, I'm good friends with JJ. The, I, I think that argument has some value. And I think we're, we're perceived that way as a state to some extent. I don't think that's what's driving the slowdown right now. But I do think in terms of, you know, attracting businesses and, and frankly, developing, you know, real estate or whatever in terms of housing. I mean, you, you put, um, the more burden you put on or willingness not to help out, the tougher it is. So, um, you know, we pro, it's, we do, the stuff that we passed, a lot of it, I, I have, I think it's, you know, I can, I can easily see how when you're going Yangbusters, you feel really good about this and it's, it's good policy. But when you're in a slowdown period and you're trying to attract businesses and, you know, it, it, it's makes it a lot tougher. So, um, I'm sympathetic to JJ immense positions. But I'm not going to say I'm empathetic. I, I do think, and I, I think the governor, this is being recorded. I think the governor has been put in a difficult position to some extent because he, um, he's more pro-business perhaps than the legislature is. And so he's been, I think he's been in a, a little bit of a tough position and he, he chooses his battles. But I, I do think it's, uh, make, it makes the discussion more relevant when your state's not growing as fast as it has in the past. Makes it easier to say, if we were a little bit more business friendly, maybe we would be doing a little bit better. Um, yeah.
You, you did a great job. Thank you. Have a good, good job.
Yeah. Okay. We're good.
High level. Oh, we were a little bit behind. So I think that we want to just jump into the next presentation and try and make the time. I need a bio break. We can certainly do that.
Thank you, first of all.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're most welcome.
To a business.
For I T, the detention facility, it's kind of hard to skip over that. And then rounding out with the shooting range enclosure. Out at Flat Rock for the lead mitigation and ventilation and all of that. In addition to those projects, these projects didn't score in that top twenty five percent. But there were several that were either out years and had their own funding sources. So, for instance, a lot of the, you'll see a lot of these are parks and open space. They're within the the Open Space Projects Fund. And so they're not really being competed with in terms of use of those funds. By say a road or the jail or any of those other construction projects. And then there were a couple of projects that were put in due to, you know, like safety. So for, for instance, the roof access ladders, that's over at the coroner probation facility. You know, without those in, there's a safety hazard to employees.
We have Steve raised his hand online. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you so much. This project, this presentation is going really well. So thank you for giving me a say. I will ask him. I don't expect the answer right away. I did send an email. Can we look at the differences later between the two project committees? One is for the transportation C I P. And then the other one is the one that you're talking about today. Brian did a great presentation last month on the transportation project C I P laid out the criterion. And then they showed us some scores. I think it would be very interesting for us to see the same as well as the the criterion differences. For this committee and the scores and how each project scored with each criterion with each member of those committees. I'm making that same request for both of those two different efforts. Again, I don't expect you to have those answers now, but it did, it did come to my mind as I was looking at this slide. Thanks.
It's good. I don't know if I have a question at this point. On your human capacity constraint slide, the high carryover projects from previous years. So what is concerning of me, and I feel like this is a good time with new elected leadership, new administrative leadership. As our CFO comes on is really to be thoughtful. I don't know if we can accomplish all of that in this year's budget. We're probably looking further out at twenty twenty seven. But I do realize your C I P set up for five years. Has been really thoughtful of what we are capable of completing. Because money that is sitting idle and there's another funding source where the county is on the hook, you know, has some funding sitting out there that's sitting idle. We don't have the purchasing capacity in today's dollars that we did ten years ago. And that is really frustrating to me. And I want to listen to this presentation and I'm going to listen to this presentation. But assigning money and then not being able to complete it. It kind of goes back to my scenario when I was on put a dollar in my council jar of Brighton City Council of, if we have a hundred projects, do we give each project a dollar? Or do we give the top two projects fifty dollars apiece? And that is kind of how I'm feeling here. Like, I don't want to stop the planning of what's to come. Or halt the flexibility of something like transportation. Things are fluid where projects can, you know, bump each other up depending on grant support, depending on regional support, sometimes political support. But it feels like when money's sitting idle is when I get really concerned of where we're at. My, my second thing is, is, you know, as the board goes forward and administration's a little step ahead of us because of the preparation. When you talk about needs and wants, it's really, can we think about knocking down that first domino? And leading the board to a decision that needs to be made, that's now a priority. And that's kind of how I feel like the board is being led a little bit of, you know, changes are being made at the department level that yes, in the big scheme of things. In three years, we have a bigger grandiose plan. But right now, like, there's things that are structurally sound. I mean, we can't get cosmetic done. I mean, I, I guess. We're gonna need to live. It's kind of like your house. When I go out and talk to, you know, our residents, it's like your house where, it's like, you know, I think my garage door is going to go out and my garage door is going to go out. And I start budgeting for the garage door repair. And if it's beyond repair, I start budgeting for the replacement of the garage door. I don't take that money, which is a need, and then turn around and buy a new car, which is a want. And I feel like, you know, we're kind of doing that where it's like, oh, we have these needs. And then, oh, but this thing over here, I also want it too. And I, I don't feel like it works that way. And, and I do have one specific example. I did share it with Dion. But just to be really mindful of, you know, I was talking. The county has been, and I don't want this staff to feel like the county has hit it out of the park. You know, we're up here at Grandiose, so let's talk, let's just say it's the Veterans Memorial. It is, it should be a national memorial. I mean, it is fantastic. It's beautiful. It is attracting visitors, the people of the county. Especially our veteran families are very proud of that memorial. Then under, you know, really grandiose, then we have greatness. And then we have it's good. And then we have, we're average. And we've never been average. And then we have like, we're only going to do the bare minimum. And I've been in cities where you only can do the bare minimum, where there's a staff member or as an elected official where it's like, there's nothing we can, like, there's, the budget's so tight, we can't do anything. So as we go from like a grandiose to a great, I don't want staff to feel deflated. Because our neighbors, our county neighbors, our city neighbors are just doing bare minimum. And so I think that the mindset of it is a backslide and we're not doing the grandiose, but we're still doing great work. Really should still be a feather in our cap. And I think that that's a mindset and a culture of like, it can't. I'm okay if the fencing at Riverdale Regional Park is not perfect. And I've been, and I drove around there three times because we have a, an open space grant. But is it standing? Number one, how much of the maintenance is it? Is it more than fifty percent? Is, you know, can't be maintained any longer? There are at least four, if not five, different types of fences out there. I can tell you as a park user, I don't care. If I'm in a parking lot and the parking lot fence and the pylon fence match and it's doing, it's structurally fine. And it's doing what it needs to do. I don't care that there's chain link fence over on the other side of the park. I'm not, it's things like that where like, I think we need to start thinking in the matters of what do we need? Is it structurally sound? If it's structurally sound for the next two years, let's kind of let it ride a little bit. If it's just cosmetic, let's let it ride for a little bit longer, then it all has to be done now. So those are just my thoughts going in. But thank you for providing this. Go ahead, Dion. Did you have something?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, no, I think that that's really important and I appreciate you addressing that. Right now, we are, I would say, in the midst of sort of a sea change in our thinking about all of this. We are, you all are, and part of it, I think, is really necessitated by shrinking resources. And also just an understanding about how we're prioritizing the resources we have. As Mark said, we don't want to start projects that we actually can't finish. And there has been a lot of that that we're still working through and still have to account for in the backlog. I think the C I P committee this year heavily emphasized feasibility and implementation in the scoring. But it's a transition that we're going through throughout the whole budget process. As far as, you know, what budget requests are brought forward and how we're prioritizing. I think the one piece that we started that we want to continue to do going into next year is making sure that we've captured all of the board priorities. But also looking at, are there projects that maybe need to be rethought or shelved? That, you know, to be fair, a few years ago might have had a lot of support or resources, but maybe aren't the best use of our funds and our, our resources now to be able to have that conversation. Because I do think the staff really wants to finish things that were started, but there, there's been some changes. And we have to change our thinking with it. So I think the C I P committee has, has definitely taken that into account. And we have a lot of, you know, leftover things that we still have to work through. And it's just going to be a process that we're continuing. And C I P is one example, but as you get into the department request, that's the lens that everybody has been asked to bring to the table as well.
Yeah. And I would say, just adding on to that, the C I P committee, I can't speak for everyone, but just on the numbers. The, the number of requests was much less this year. And so that, that message is, is pretty well received through the committee, I'd say, on a whole. And so it, I wouldn't say there's any sort of negative connotation to it. I think there's just, we're getting to a better understanding of the, the current position.
Thank you for that. I have Julie and then Kathy and then Steve also online has his hand up.
All right. My question is actually about the slide that we're looking at right now, the additional projects out of rank order. So the way that I'm seeing these slide decks, the thirteen projects that you recommend are on the previous slide. And then these projects are like parking lots.
These are also recommended.
These are also recommended.
Yes, because of, you know, alternative funding sources or, you know, the safety. I keep pointing to the roof access ladders and things like that.
Okay. All right. So these are also recommended to move forward for this next cycle. And then can you help me understand the twenty twenty seven start dates for the CASP? So we have the runoff, the taxiway runoff, and then the renovation. Is that because of a grant that you said?
That's the, the timing of the project. Yeah. So they'll start with the, the runway seventeen three five, the one, the hundred and seventy three thousand. And the drainage improvements, that's like the design component. And then following that would be the, the run up and other components of the project.
And then on this, the slide that we're looking at right now, the twenty thirty start, oh, sorry, next slide. Sorry, the twenty thirty start for Pelican Pond. So is this fifty thousand dollars we're just saving to start that project?
We're planning to, no. So we're, it's on the plan in twenty thirty. And so as we're doing our forecasting, you know, it fits within our revenues out to that point. But we're not setting aside those funds in twenty twenty six.
Okay. So which of these projects are we setting aside funds for in twenty twenty six?
So anything that doesn't list a start date in a future year would be in the twenty twenty six budget.
That's helpful. Thank you.
So you, we started the budget. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm out of order. Were you done and then we'll go to Dion and Steve?
Go ahead. Yeah.
Thanks. I, okay. So I just want to make sure I understand. So when you talk about the parking lot. So are we going to see what's in the parking lot? Or because I, I mean, this is my first year on the commission, but I understand, you know, that there could be expectations of something that commissioners think is going forward. And then when are we, as the board informed of like, hey, this thing, this might be moved to the parking lot? Because that might be a place where, you know, we need to have a discussion about, you know, whether or not the commission really agrees with that or for, for various reasons. Not, not to disregard, I mean, not to disregard the work of, of panel. But sometimes there, you know, there, there are expectations that something's moving forward. And then it gets, and then it winds up in the parking lot and we don't always know why. I mean, I've had that experience in other organizations. You know, not just, not just government, but other, you know, things get, get moved. So that's one question. And then to, so that I understand these additional projects that you say are out of rank order. That you've mentioned parks and open space. So parks and open space projects are coming from, they, they're budgeted under parks, under that specific department.
The, the ones that are moving forward here are within the Open Space Projects Fund.
Okay.
So they're not competing for anything in the general fund or, or anything like that.
That's so, okay. So these are, so it's yay, these things get to move forward. We have funding for them.
And, and I guess one caveat, I would say to that, for the Riverdale Bluffs Open Space, there is a general fund component of that, but it's tied to public land dedication fees, which are restricted in their use for like open space type projects.
Okay. That, that is, that is very helpful. And I wanted to address your first question about the parking lot items. So we can provide to you the whole list of projects that were submitted and recommended. And I believe in a future study session, as we get closer to adopting the budget, we can have a conversation about if there's things that need to be reprioritized or moved and. That's, that's really, that's really all, that's really what I'm looking for is just to make sure that we, that we get the, that we, so that, so that we, because we, so that we have the full understanding of ramifications and consequences of the choices that we're making.
So, so the process for, for the capital projects committee is, has always been that they make the recommendation to the county manager. And then it becomes, and then the county manager fine tunes the budget from that point. And then it, we have three study sessions scheduled through October to go over all of the budget requests and as it relates to the proposed budget. And you will see the full ask and where everything lands versus recommended parking lot, not recommended and all of that.
Thank you. Very appreciate that. That's all I have for now. I think I saw Steve's hand up.
Yes.
Yeah, he was.
Yeah, thank you. Those are all good questions. I want to support what Lynn was talking about, that we need some clarity on. Are we, when we do the, you know, the carry forward funding, there's, there's that balance between carry forward funding, just because some, we kind of put aside and put dibs on something. Doesn't mean it gets to be carried forward forever. But there is that difference between like Lynn mentioned, are we saving up for something? That, you know, over the next few years, and by doing that, that makes sense, whether it's facilities or any sort of other assets. So I just think we need more clarity. This page in this presentation, it was a little bit more clear in the transportation. The similar transportation presentation, when you kind of saw what is the actual budget that we anticipate over those next five to ten years for each of these projects? Do you remember how it would show twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty nine? And you'd be able to see like how much we're doing for each of these. Because on this slide, it says like a start in twenty twenty seven. Does that mean the amount is starting twenty seven? Or the project begins in twenty twenty seven? Or twenty thirty for the Pelican Ponds? I think the visual of the other way was a little bit more clear. Also, it's not entirely clear, and I think we need to find a way to identify where there, some of these things are referring to just open space funds versus general funds. So that's a second thing. And then I guess, so I want to, number one, support Claire asking for clarity on the issue that Lynn brought up. Number two, just give some feedback on maybe how we can make it a little bit more clear. It might be one of the next slides. I apologize if that's the case. And then the next, then the next thing is, there's, there's a paradigm shift when we start talking about whether it's here or even in the transportation. You having those three tiers. And a parking lot item, if it doesn't fit into this top ten or whatever that first tier is, means that we're not working on it. In the past, that's how it was done. And then we switched, it was a while ago, ten, eight years ago. It was, what, since I've been here, where we would have transportation and others say, but we're going to continue to try to advance everything on the list as much as possible, at least within reason, obviously not a hundred projects. Because opportunities do come up. And in the context of trans, transportation and sometimes facilities, like CASP, it may not fit in that top tier now. But if we've advanced it enough along the way in a little bit, even if it's not taking up a lot of resources, we still can make things a little bit more shovel ready when a new grant or other outside opportunity arises. And that's how Boulder was always, and Denver were always so much better at the transportation game. Is that they had a long list of projects that they were always working on and advancing, even if it wasn't their top priority, because when the moment came for that opportunity, they were able to say, ooh, let's pull this off the shelf and we're more ready. Whereas Adams County, we consistently had a large number of projects that were like, oh, man, I wish we would have had this a little bit more ready. We would have been able to compete. And so we lost those opportunities. Those are the three things. It's a lot, but I'm, did everyone understand or do I need to clarify again?
Yep, we got it.
And, and, and feedback well received on, on the slide presentation. I'd like to blame artificial intelligence, but you're going to have to put it on my human intelligence. I was trying to make bigger text. And we can definitely alter that kind of presentation in the future and, and definitely take that into note as we start reviewing things with the proposed budget.
It, it also kind of gets into the underlying, how much, if we create kind of a standard that we use in this context, as well as the transportation C I P context, then it'll be kind of a, a standard or very consistent sort of methodology. And it might help us all internally and externally with our communications.
Good suggestion.
So the next couple of slides are kind of on the, the topic of carryover. So just kind of checking in on the current C I P. You can see in front of you, buy fund, the number of projects. And then the, the budget, what is either spent or under contract? And then the gray piece of the pie, I think that's gray. Colors are not my strong suit. That would be unencumbered, not under contract. Basically, either no activity or, or an under budget or something along those lines. So we wanted to show this to say that there is work being done. But there is a, you know, at this point in the year, a significant portion of funds within encumbered and remaining, that would be if we were end of the year, those funds would be eligible for carryover to continue. So encumbered, when we do a carryover, we give priority to because we're already under contract. And that generally means something's underway this past year. And, you know, moving forward, anything that has had no activity in the current, current year would certainly be scrutinized more heavily and discussed with why are we still tying funds up if during twenty twenty five, there was no activity?
Yeah. So, thank you. So I, I want to, I'm not, I don't think I'm understanding what you're, this slide very well. So say, looking at general funds, so we had, there are thirty seven projects that have been budgeted for or are currently happening?
There's a total of thirty seven projects that are budgeted for with a total budget of twenty five point seven million. Nine point nine million is under contract with five point one million spent and ten point seven million remaining. So it's not under contract, not spent. Either a no activity in the project or partial activity, like with just design, but there was a full budget for construction.
The nine point nine goes, is in the blue. Five point one is in the spent, is orange, and the remaining falls under the gray.
Yes.
Okay. And at the end of the year, these, assuming these projects are all moving forward, what, what did you say this will, should look like, say, December thirty first then?
Well, what it will look like and what it should look like are, are two different things. Well, could be two different things.
Wait, whatever work, yeah.
So historically, we've had that bigger, the gray and blue piece of the pie is much larger than what's actually been spent in a current year. And that's why we focus so heavily on human capacity. The caveat I'll put to that is even with human capacity, it is difficult to say no to some, like a, a maintenance project that has a very good case, you know, the windows, ceiling windows and things like that. It's hard to say no to. And I know that Amir and his team, and, and he's not here, he may be watching. They're, they're looking at creative ways to package projects and, and deliver more in the same timeframe. And so we're trying to balance that. What do we put in for maintenance and things like that versus what do we hold off on because we just may not get it done?
And the carryover would be because some of these projects are obviously multi-year projects. So this is just continuing, we've allocated the funds, we spend year over year as, as the project progresses.
Correct. There's, there's a mixture of, of multi-year projects. Or I, I think the trap we've fallen into is we continue to build a five-year plan and then carry over and the old projects sort of maintain priority because they're, they were on the five-year plan sooner. And so those, those will get worked on first and then the list just grows.
So carryover doesn't mean that we're just holding on to that money. It just means that it's being spent as we move forward.
Yeah. And, and in a way, we do hold on to it because it continues to tie up budget once it's carried over. It doesn't get adopted with the budget. That will be our first amendment next year is any ongoing or uncompleted projects from twenty twenty five.
Thank you. The gray area? Thanks for letting me talk. That's the transition we're in right now, really trying to rightsize the project list and reduce that. We really want to make sure that we're understanding which projects actually are multi-year and we anticipated that those would roll versus projects that for whatever reason, as Mark said, didn't have significant activity. The priority changed, the resources changed. I think in the past, we've rolled those forward without that as much scrutiny on what's happening with those projects. And there's a huge effort right now to actually focus on making sure that those projects are still viable, that we're figuring out what challenges or barrier is to moving the project forward. And if it's not a viable project or if resources aren't available, that we aren't carrying that project forward on our books year over year. If it's not a project that's actually going to be completed, so that's the, the work that's happening this year. Really been putting a lot of effort into that and will continue to, to address that. And I think it also goes to Lynn's comments about how effectively we're using the, the fund balance that we have and projects that we have that we're not tying up budget necessarily on projects that just aren't moving effectively. Yeah. Great. Thank you.
And my question on that, just to kind of follow up, is you mentioned that there's projects that were funded for that may have not been completed or worked on and we just carry them forward. And they're automatically put to the top of the list when it comes to prioritization, prioritization. So when do we relook at that prioritization? So just because it was approved, I mean, even years ago, some of these projects have been hanging out for a while. Is that a priority today? So when in this process are those projects reprioritized at any given moment? Is that a, a something that we do and it's something that's going to be kind of part of the discussion about the C I P moving forward?
So that's part of the scoring process, the C I P committee. And as we looked at sort of how we weighted scoring, that was one of the factors is looking at, is this project still feasible, viable, to still have resources? Does it still meet priorities? So in the recommendations, we're trying to hone in closer to getting rid of some of those lingering projects that aren't, you know, working. So we talked about that third tier that are sent back to departments for development or, you know, further, further work on. As well as Mark mentioned, when we go to do the first amendment of the budget and we'll be looking at the carry forward items, there's also a process then to look at everything that's been carried over. To look at every line and say, is this project still going to get done? Why didn't any action happen? You know, there's lots of reasons, you know, sometimes there's things that happen that the project no longer makes sense or whatever it is. But they go through a process line by line with the carry forward items. And when we bring that forward to you, we're looking at, is this still on the list? Is this still a project that needs to be carried forward and approved? Or should this money be released essentially back to the budget and this project is no, no longer viable? So there's a couple of places where we're doing that, capturing that. That's generally how that, that works.
Yep.
Is there any way to get a list of what all of these projects are? So for example, like any of these, you know, projects that haven't gotten done or still kind of lingering, like I don't know what any of those are. Do you have a list and just a short description of what these are?
Yeah, we can get that.
Is, I know we're not in a yes, no today. And I didn't commit to memory what's the criteria, scoring criteria is. We might want to look, I, I would like to look at that, probably not this year. You know, the county spends, I feel like we fund as a board, an enormous amount of planning documents, master planning documents, different planning. And in the scoring process and capital improvement, are we referring back to those plans of, is the plan, are these capital improvements consistent with the planning of those documents? And one that comes to mind is Amir, I think it's under Amir still, and his team on the second phase of our kind of environmental sustainability plan. And not to say that the ladders aren't important, but you know, is it's, we obviously put funding towards these plans to move these larger packages, if you want to call it, to meet certain goals and criteria that we have. I guess I would like to see that as part of the criteria. What is not coming into focus for me? And I don't want to go so harsh to dwell on it, is I feel like this is a little bit of a shell game. Like, if it's not funded here, it can be funded here, here and here. And it's like, just, it's confusing. And it's, I think for the board, it's easier for us to understand. It's confusing and it's, I think for the board, it's easier for us to understand project based. Like here's the priority projects. And then when we talk about whether it's board's priority or how these priorities come to be. Then talk about how the funding comes into play because some of these things, I know our carryovers probably new to Julie and Kathy. They really live in directors' heads and we're just like, where did that come from? Like, how did that? How did that trump, you know, how did the Veterans Memorial trump so many of these different needed maintained projects? And I think that we're really going to have to get down to the the nitty gritty. I mean, I. Back to my garage door is um, I'm very frugal. And so the needs and the wants, I really get in the weeds of like, do I really want this or do I just, I do I need it or is it something I really, really want? And I think that we have not had to go through that exercise here. And I think it's a good muscle to. Kind of awaken of like, is it a need or a want? Is it pretty or is it gonna fall down or people are gonna get hurt though? So. But I feel like I'm looking for total transparency of all of the projects. And if they're carryovers, like, are they still relevant? I think that's the biggest question for me is like, is it relevant? To what we're doing today? So that's, I'll just leave it at that. I won't go on anymore. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Um, so here we have the the same information, but for the major maintenance and replacement plan. And I I mean, I don't have anything really additional to add there other than to say, you know, we've had this. This backlog of maintenance and it it the trend seems to be continuing. Uh, so the next couple of slides are our summary slides. Um, again, the full detail behind all the recommendations. Is planned to be presented as part of budget development. In our October study sessions. Down to the project level. And so and same here with the major maintenance and replacement plan. Um, so just to kind of wrap things up, that you know, the committee um, recommendation was to fund the top twenty five percent of projects. You know, th- there was a recommendation um, from the committee there, you know, the jail is the top one. And as it was presented, it it can be just cash funded.
Specifically repairs on the jail, just like flag that.
Yes.
For anyone listening, emergency safety, building structural repairs, maintenance.
Yes, a very good uh, clarification commissioner. And that is the project that was scored. It was.
Name that.
Detention facility maintenance.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, we're talking over you.
So yes, and then uh, you know, again, prioritizing projects that we could actually get done, I think is going to be key. And so now it gets to the 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 point that this pro- process is at is refining with uh, the county manager and E L T. To be presented to you. So the committee has done its first step and now we're we're kind of sharpening the pencil.
Great.
And commissioners, you know this, but for everyone watching tomorrow, we'll have a two-hour session on the detention facility. We've been working with this team here to put together um, some strategies for how to fi- finance those repairs. That are listed here in the C I P. So there's a deep dive tomorrow on that as well.
In that thing, we are going to go a quick update on our debt capacity and it's related to this conversation. Two hundred and twenty odd billion dollars is not available just in our C I P fund. There's some alternative financing that would be needed. For us to actually keep this plan moving, so.
Can I, can I ask a quick question on the full recommendation by fund C I P slide? I think it's too back. Just to kind of clarify, so. So in twenty twenty seven, we're asking for more funding than in twenty twenty six? I thought twenty twenty seven was going to be a bad year for us.
This is the, this is the debt conversation.
Okay.
I think that's driving that is the detention facility. And so we'll be discussing that in our next session as well as a lot tomorrow as well.
All right. Okay, great. Just, I was like, we're supposed to.
It's a good question and that is why we are talking um, debt overview and Robin Moore from Piper. Who is our um, independent financial advisor. We'll go through some of our capacity for. Um, for debt and for C O Ps in particular, which are not legal debt. They don't have to go through the voters. It's a uh, she can walk us through um, the ins and outs of that. But it's a, it's a different form of leveraging our existing resources and our existing buildings um, to help build out new infrastructure. So as we look at. Existing property and sales taxes, sort of where have we, where have we been? We've had a big run-up um, in the post-COVID years in both sales taxes and property taxes. Property taxes being the blue line here, a pretty big spike in twenty twenty four. This is when the legislature decided to make some changes with that special session in their house bill. Um, so that will impact the next few years in particular. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in specifics later, but it's just sort of giving you a trend of where we've been, sales tax and property tax wise. Sales taxes, we've seen a bit of a leveling out. We saw a big run-up post-COVID. And we've been just under and right about a hundred million in total collections. The last couple of years were projected to end maybe about one hundred and two million for twenty twenty five. And about forty million as we move a little bit further on in the capital facilities fund. In particular, that's where we make our existing C O P payments. So the money we've raised in previous years to build some of our large facilities, such as this government center, the human services center. We are making annual lease payments on those and that comes from sales taxes in our capital facilities fund. That is about forty million right now, just over forty million and our existing C O P payments total up to about twenty. So as we move on, here's an overview of the projects. Yeah, yeah.
That so. With forty million.
So so forty million is our, is our sales tax that is collected specifically for capital facilities. So of our point seven five percent sales tax, um, point three comes into the county. And specifically goes towards county capital facilities. So facility maintenance, new buildings, all of that. Sort of runs through this fund that's funded by sales tax.
Forty million dollars annually that we have for C I P.
Correct. And so the difference between these is this twenty million. So we have twenty million in payments and we bring in a little over forty million in revenue. That's what we consider available for new projects, our maintenance projects. That's where Mark had the, um, if I go back a few slides, this forty seven million and seventy eight million. As you can see, we don't have that much money per year. That's why we're talking about if, you know, if we go forward with that plan. We're gonna need to find some alternative financing solutions.
So about half of our forty million goes in debt service.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can afford a part of it, but we certainly can't cash fund that, that level of a project. So our existing, our existing C O Ps, we have three different series right now. We have twenty fifteen. Which paid for most of the government center and all of the human services center. And we leased out two facilities to get that done and that is the detention facility and human services center. Those are sort of. You know, obligated behind these uh, we're making lease payments on those facilities back. And in twenty twenty, we refunded a small portion. There was a little bit remaining in twenty ten that they had to build out to finish the government center. We refunded that and that is sort of ending its life. It's a very small payment. It's uh, projected or it will end in twenty thirty. So we have various ending dates here for some of these. And then the last one, of course, um, we did a C O P late in twenty twenty four for Riverdale Regional Park. And thirty five million for road and bridge improvements as we finished off some of those large pro- projects that all came together at the same time. And as part of that process, we have obligated a few of our other buildings under leases. Uh, Fleet and Public Works Building, the Sheriff's Substation, the Western Services Center and the District Attorney Building. And that one is a thirty-year term as well and will end in twenty fifty four. So you see sort of a history and a projection of our our tax or I'm sorry, our C O P payments going out. And we do have some drops in some of these out years. That will, you know, free up some money at that time, but. Uh, so that's, that's where we stand. And Robin, I'm going to let her walk through sort of what's on the table. What do we have capacity to add on to this as we consider a major project like the, all the jail repairs? And should we need to find additional resources? How much can we find?
Good morning.
Morning.
Most afternoon.
That's the correct one.
Yeah, that's, that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, go down.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Ah, there we go. Good morning. I'm Robin Moore. I'm with a firm called Piper Sandler. We are the financial advisor or municipal advisor to Adams County. I think I've seen some of you before talking about somewhat similar topics. So this is, um, I'm going to give a very high-level overview of some information that sounds like it fits well into what you're talking about. Over the next couple of days. And this is your, what we call C O P or Certificate of Participation Capacity. So the county, as Mark had mentioned, can borrow money, repay it over time. Because it is subject to annual appropriation, meaning each year in the budget, you set aside the line item for that year's debt service payment. Or that year's payment. And it's not an obligation over more than one year. It does not go to a vote. Um, so it's a financing tool commonly used in Colorado by cities and counties, a little bit school districts. But primarily, it's the funding source for a lot of counties in in Colorado. So the goal today is just to give you a um, very high-level snapshot of how much you can borrow. And this is a little different graphical depiction of what Mark just talked about. These are the three series of C O Ps. Or certificates of particip- participation that you have outstanding. And these are the annual payments. So um, again, just sort of a picture view of how you're making your payments over um, over time. The average is about twelve million dollars. Uh, Mark broke it down more clearly and specifically in in his last slide. And then kind of the meat of what we're talking about here is the, what we call debt capacity or C O P capacity analysis. The one thing I want to start off by saying is we put numbers out and we say, this is your capacity and they stick in our mind. The way we calculate this is based on a lot of moving pieces. So we look at what your historical revenues and expenditures have been over time. We make of, eh, from our perspective, a fairly conservative projection and we'll go through what we assumed in our analysis. About what the revenues and expenditures are going to grow to. But of course, all of that is a little bit of a guess. You know, we have, we use data like what uh, Dr. Wobecan was talking about before to stay conservative. Um, and we also, of course, need to have some assessment of what interest rates are going to do. And we don't, we don't truly know what they're going to do over time. So um, with all that said, um, one other, actually, one other interesting data point. Is, you know, we use these, we make these high-level assumptions. You actually had a really good, the county had a really good twenty twenty four. So that helps the analysis. You know, as we get more twenty five, twenty twenty five data, we'll go back and we'll just keep refining this to give a better picture. But the good news is, you know, for the detention center improvements that you were talking about, um, you know, amongst other projects. That fits into the capacity that we've calculated. So the bottom line here, you know, if we're looking just at today's interest rates. And you can see, we looked at the general fund and we look at the capital facilities fund because you make, you can make payments out of both of those funds. We're kind of around the high five hundred million range. So let's call it five hundred and eighty million. That's it, today's interest rates. That's knowing what we know about your historical financial situation. And with a fairly conservative, again, a conservative outlook going forward. Um, you can see some of those assumptions and then we break them out in more detail on some later slides. But we assume three percent annual revenue and expense growth. We uh, we take out investment earnings and some miscellaneous income. We assume annual capital outlay expenditures at twenty tw- twenty twenty four values and grow them at three percent annually. We do take some of the twenty twenty four C O Ps, as Mark was saying, that those are made out of the road and bridge fund. So we actually, that helps your capacity. And then we assume that you don't want to borrow as much money as you have available. There's a cushion. So um, that's what we call debt service coverage. It's not a legal pledge of the county. But we assume that if you're going to borrow a hundred dollars, you need to have at least a hundred and thirty dollars of what we call net revenue. So revenue minus, minus expenses. Um, so back to the table in the middle, that's the kind of bottom line number. If rates go up fifty basis points, so a hundred basis points is one percent. So if rates go up point five percent or fifty basis points, combined, that drops that five hundred and eighty million to about five hundred and forty five million. So you could see there's a little changes, move the needle, actually a somewhat, you know, fair amount. If rates go up a full percent, that five hundred and eighty million is now just over five hundred million. Obviously, if rates go down, that helps you out. And those are the top two lines on the table. So you go from five hundred and eighty million where we are today up to about six hundred and sixty five million if rates go down. Again, a lot of assumptions go into this. So I always sort of caution, we hear the number, you know, five hundred twelve million or so to five hundred and eighty million. You know, that those numbers are where we are based on the assumptions we use now. So, you know, take those with some flexibility as, you know, you're thinking through what you can borrow for C O P capacity going forward. Um, so let me pause there. Any questions about sort of the high-level? High-level punchline of C O Ps. Um, we're not going to go through this. This is a, just a very nerdy breakout of, and if you're over. I don't know, thirty five or forty, you probably can't even read it like me. But um, basically, this just shows, you know, when we do this analysis. And I had given you sort of the summary data points that we try to remain conservative in the growth assumption. So um, revenues and expenditures, and that's all this breaks out. Uh, same thing in the capital facilities fund, basically the same three percent growth revenues and expenses. And you heard a lot about the market, you know, obviously where we are now, as I showed you on the first slide, the interest rates are a key driver in this analysis. And, you know, we've, we're in the municipal bond market, so a little bit different than the U S Treasury market. Treasuries are taxable, municipals are tax exempt. They track fairly closely. So um, you can see here, the blue line is the the taxable treasury index. Dr. Robikin talked about the ten-year. You, we typically borrow, um, counties typically borrow a little bit farther, so twenty or thirty years. You can see we're a little bit elevated relative to where we wanted, we were at the lows. But historically, we're still actually in a fairly comfortable range. You know, as to where that's going to go, it's hard to say. You know, the, our economists are predicting one more Fed rate cut. But as we heard this morning, there's not always a direct correlation between the Fed cutting rates and then how it's translating in the municipal bond market. This is just a picture of the Fed rate cut expectations. And that's all we have in slides, but happy to answer more questions, talk about C O Ps. Yeah.
Quick question, going back to the slide, the table in it, so.
Yeah.
That one right here. So tell me if I'm interpreting this correctly. I'm looking at the today's rates line and I'm looking at the combined number of the five hundred and seventy nine million, if you will. So is that the borrowing capacity we have even with our current levels of C O Ps?
Yes.
Okay. So on top of the C O Ps we already have, this is what we can borrow.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Maximize.
If you were to maximize all of it, yes, not saying we need to, but.
Yes.
Just trying to understand that number.
Yes, that's a good, yes, you're reading it correctly.
All right, great. I'm in line.
And then, of course, that would change because some of our C O Ps are ending in twenty eight, was it? So that, so then.
Yeah, we factored all that, that is factored in. But again, this is assuming you borrow and then you do nothing else for a very long time. For a very long time.
So, uh, one, I appreciate this presentation and I appreciate questions from my colleagues. Follow-up questions. Dion, you said very quickly, like that's assuming this is our capacity, assuming we maximize. Could you talk a little bit about, like, I just want to make sure I understand that I'm thinking what you're thinking. When you think about maximizing, um, all of our financial opportunities on behalf of the county. What does that mean to you? So what does that mean? Like gesturing?
So I'm referencing if we decided we want to, um, borrow our full capacity. This is the. Capacity we have today to borrow. Um, but, uh, as you just heard, that's. With the consideration that typically this is the 30-year COP and that would mean that we are basically locking up all of our capacity. Uh, for 30 years, should we choose to do that? Um, that's, that's maximizing, um, how much we could borrow and also our capacity, given our current projections of. Revenues, what we'd be able to pay in debt service. Uh, so. I, I mentioned that just because it's a big number, but also I don't know that we would want to borrow all of it, but that is the. Capacity and our debt service gets increased the more we, we borrow for a long period of time. So that's. That'll be a conversation when we talk about detention center tomorrow is, you know, how much of that are we willing to commit, um, in our debt capacity?
It's probably a question. Oh, Steve had his hand up. He just, a little thing disappeared. Steve, are you there?
Yeah, I just sent an email to you guys of the, um. Email we got from Nancy in the, in May. It was four, almost four, four or five months ago. And, uh, my question is, is when she sent that email of the debt capacity at that time. Was she referring only to the COP? Capacity of the capital facilities or was she referring to both? Because she said we were at 290. And so I'm trying to figure out how it compares to the doc, to the numbers that are on the screen now. Thank you.
It was just the capital facilities fund, Commissioner.
Okay. So at that time we thought we had 290 in here. It's only 241. So we were off by 50 million.
Well, it. As Robin was indicating, it really depends on where you land on interest rates. So it could be 290. As part of that middle column, are you able to see that where you're at?
Yeah.
See where it says today's rates? So we're trending about 275 right now in that middle column.
Right. And it might've been a difference of the rate now versus the one in May.
That's what I'm telling you.
And it might've been the general, I don't have it in front of me. It could have been the general fund. The other difference is we have the benefit now of your 2024 audit. And your financials came in really strong compared to prior years. And so that increased the capacity. Relative to where we would have been even four or five months ago.
We remember why that is.
Thank you.
Julie. Um, what is? And, and I, what is best practice when it comes to? The amount of debt we should be having in some of these funds. So for example, currently we're paying essentially 50%. Um, of our, what is it, funds that's going to debt payments. Thank you. Is there a best practice of? We shouldn't be at higher than 75%, 80%? I don't know. Is there industry best practice at other governments too?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, there's a lot of things that we consider. I don't, I don't have an exact numbers to the, in average or what we see. Colorado municipalities and, um, and county governments tend to borrow less, I think, than. We see nationally, obviously COPs are really the biggest funding source out of the general fund. Now. If we're looking at like utilities or transportation where it's a specific revenue stream, that's, that's different. Um, you know, I think the things that we consider when we talk through with entities. That are asking questions just like that is, you know, historically, like what are your, your, your operating and. Um, you know, so your operating requirements in, in terms of expenses and revenues. So. You know, what do you need to come out of pocket every year to maintain your, um, you know, in the general fund for your expenses? And then, you know, really what we do is we then target. That coverage level. So we want to say if you're going to, if you have big projects and you want to max them out, we want to make sure you've got cushion. For things down the future. So it's really a, a, you know, we can get a more specific, like what other counties have done. But because you're coming out of the general fund, you have a lot of ongoing operating and capital expenditures. That we really need to be thoughtful of. If you were a, uh, an entity that really is purely maintaining capital, that might be very different. But you, you know, and again, this is sort of excess capacity. So obviously this is, you know, assuming that you're. Coming out of pocket again with the revenues and expenses that you typically have been. But it's really a combination of, you know, what you see projected with. Capital expenses, you know, ongoing capital maintenance and then what you think you might need. For, you know, any like deferred maintenance or things that are more operating in nature.
All right. And so really from my perspective, I worry about. How are we tying our hands for future opportunities with the level of, um, you know. COP, that the debt that we're having, you know, what, how do we? How do we kind of balance those two and be, make a really responsible decision? So that's why I was curious.
Yeah, that.
If there's like a standard or something that.
It, yeah, that's really hard, especially out of the general fund with COPs because you're doing so much else out of your general fund. You know, if it's just the capital facilities fund, it's a little bit different because you're targeting specific capital projects. Um, you know, the couple of other things that counties think about is, you know, your credit rating. So you're solidly in the double A category. You are. Double A to double A when we had these rated last year, how important that is to you to maintain because if it is, then that's going to. Drive some of the metrics. And it, it feels like lately in the last couple of years, especially. The, um, the projects have gotten bigger and more expensive. So the, you know, I've, I've. I'm almost 30 years into doing this, 20 in Colorado and a lot of these projects that we see were. 20, 30, 40 million dollar projects. They jumped up to sort of 80, 100 and now they're even bigger. And so that's really eaten into a lot of debt capacity for a lot of municipalities. Whereas before. These projects would have just been sort of blips on your, you know, on your general fund. But we're, we're now sort of, you know, I'm sort of worried on your behalf. That the next project is going to be just as big and just as maybe unknown now, but it's five years from now. And if you. Issue 500 million, you're not going to have any capacity or very little for something that's, you know, that's going to, this is a 30-year obligation or a 20-year obligation. And so you don't, for the most part, we don't even know what's needed down the road. So it is, it's important to not. You know, the 500, we put it up there, but I certainly hope we're not issuing a $500 million COP for Adams County.
Final question, just so I understand. I'm thinking about it like a credit card and I'm not sure if this is the right way to think about this. So if we do have an increase. Um, debt capacity, like if we take on more debt, right? Does, does our credit rating decrease?
Well, it depends. It's a good question. So, um, it is like your credit score. The debt is a little bit more like your mortgage where you're making. You know, you're locking in a rate. It's, it's fixed. Um, the, the, um, the rating. Agencies, so Moody's, Standard and Poor's and Fitch, um, look at a variety of factors. So they look at sort of, you know. I, I sort of characterize them into two main categories. Things that are out of your control. Adams County, you know, a lot of the things that we saw in that first presentation, the economic, demographic, the climate of the community. Uh, you know, retailers, what sales tax doing. Then there's all the things in your control. So. The, what the budget's looking like, you know, what it has looked like, what, um, you know, what projects you have, what is, you know, what's the. The operating and capital budget process like and how much that you're issuing now and what projects you have to come. And all of that goes into the assessment of your rating. Now, if you, you know, but. The, I, it's really hard for us, for me off the top of my head to say, if you issue 500 million, will your rating go down? We certainly like, we plug it into the scorecard. That the rating agency use and we can give an assessment of, we think if you're going to borrow this much, it could impact your rating. Um, but generally speaking, you know, you've got, this is a big county with a lot going on. And so you do have capacity. You know, the other part to this question, which is I think a really, you know, good segue into what you're asking is if you issue. 580 million, what would that do to your rating? If you issue 200 million, what will you do to that? What will that do to your rating? And, you know, we've seen communities lately. I mean, we just, you know, did a COP for a community in the mountains and it was fairly large. And it actually did notch down their rating by one notch. And, you know, so from double A two to double A three. And so there is potentially an impact because you're, you know, consuming the, the thing that makes you a really good credit, which is having a. A lot of excess capacity and a lot of flexibility for dealing with things that are coming at you. You know, and that's really what the rating agencies are concerned about. The, you know, if something happens where all of a sudden you need to make a. You know, some giant expenditures, will you have the flexibility and then will you still have cushion? So those are all the things. And we, you know, we, that's what we help assess is you're thinking about the, you know, you're dialing in the, the dollar amount is, you know. What, what could this do to your credit rating?
Thank you. I appreciate.
Yeah.
Let me do a quick time check. It's 11:47.
Julie asked my question. Your second question was my question. So good job. Thanks. And I know you've got like four more slides. So I'm, I'm good.
And I think she has a question.
I did, but Julie asked it. That's her second question.
Steve, did you have a question right now?
No, I think Julie asked it as well because it was just about us getting over.
Good job, Julie.
Overextended is the question. I thought it was a good answer too.
Got it.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, I thought there were. Would you all prefer to work through lunch or do we, are we good with, we go a little over at the end of the day?
10 minutes and then work through lunch?
Sure. Yeah, I'm, I'm up for whatever.
Yeah, just like a small enough break that we can get out and do the things and.
All right, well, uh, we are not exactly on schedule, so we can get started. Our, our next presentation is going to focus on, um, the funds, fun balance categories and classification. This is something we've been, kind of talking about for a little while and, uh, so hopefully, you know, within this presentation, we answer most of your questions and, and gather anything that we haven't answered that we can bring back to you over the rest of budget development. And so, and the main purpose of fun balanced classifications are for, you know, transparency, accountability. Um, oftentimes it's a legal restriction, uh, based on where the funding came from. Um, and then you can kind of see some of those, uh, restrictions up there on the slide. There are two different kinds of, uh, we'll say fun balance, uh, policy. So we talked about accounting classifications. Those are more like, what generally accepted accounting principles and things like that, uh, require us to, um, to, to, to record on our books. Um, and then we have, um, that's okay.
If you hit play. Put it back. Hover over the yellow. And then hit resume. Triangle. Yeah, there you go.
Um, and, and the second category, um, would be those policy based fund balance targets. So th- those are more internally set. Those are things that, uh, y- you know, like we would take direction from the board or we would make recommendations based on, uh, industry standards, for instance, from the Government Finance Officers Association and things like that. So, uh, you can see up there on the screen that the different kinds of accounting classifications, um, a- and then sort of the, the breakdown of what makes up a policy based, uh, fund balance target. And so over the next couple of slides, we're going to go over, kind of the, the major funds, um, and, and then we have a summary slide for sort of all the other funds. Um, just to kind of go over it, there, there are different, uh, fund balance categories. These are those accounting ident-, uh, you, you know, the gap rule, um, accounting classifications. So you have non-spendable. These are things that you cannot spend so that, or, or likely they've already been spent. So prepaid is a really good example of that. Um, you know, oftentimes we'll, we'll prepay a vendor, uh, a specific example. We prepaid Mile High Flood for the work they're doing out at the regional park. That money went out the door, but we can't recognize it on our financial statements until the work is actually done. So that would be non-spendable. The money is actually already gone. Um, restricted, that's, uh, you know, imposed on us by someone outside of the county, um, committed is formally done, uh, through an action of the board and has to, can be formally undone through an action of the board. And assigned would be more policy driven, um, type fund balance classifications. Unassigned obviously is the most flexible. That's, um, that's just extra money left over, I guess. So here you can see a summary. This is, um, this is the general fund twenty twenty five. So we're not looking at twenty twenty six numbers right now. We're kind of looking at what is going to lead into the numbers we're using to plan for twenty twenty six. And so you can see the beginning fund balance, um, what we have in revenue and expenditure. This is based on the most recent amendment that was reviewed in study session a couple of weeks ago and goes to public hearing tomorrow. Um, and then you can see the reserves and designations. That is a mixture of those accounting classifications and then internal policy targets. Um, so starting at the very bottom there, uh, the strategic reserve policy. Um, you may have heard us reference this many times in the past. This is the GFOA best practice of keeping two months of your operating expenditures in reserve. Um, that's your, your rainy day fund type, uh, reserves. You won't see these if you pull up the ACFIR because it is a policy target, not a actual fund balance designation. We don't tie it up on our financial statements. Um, and in the general fund, we do have some prepaid items. You'll see our restricted, uh, items are the Tabor Reserve. We have sheriff intelligence fees, public land dedication. These are funds that we are holding in the general fund, but they are restricted in their use. And so we can only use them based on the imposition of the outside agency. And then we have some assigned funds. Those would be like the animal shelter donations, uh, you know, po- policy wise, we, we take those in for the animal shelter. We say we're going to use them for the animal shelter. And so we restrict those to be used only for animal shelter purposes. Um, we do have in addition to our two months of operating, a small component of future years capital. Um, because that is tied to specific projects, they actually do report on those through the financial statements. Um, so you'll, throughout budget, you'll hear us often refer to two, two months of operating and thirty three percent of next year's capital. That's kind of our, what we see as the strategic reserve, but the split in terms of reporting and accounting, um, shows that is assigned where the two percent is not. Um, and then you, you know, we don't have any of that lowest designation, uh, or committed, uh, fund balance in the general fund as of this point. Uh, that's certainly something that could happen in the future. Um, following the general fund, um, you, you know, we, we show on this prior slide that our projections for um, ending the year are right around a hundred million in available fund balance after those reserves and designations. A couple of assumptions there. That's assuming one hundred percent revenue collection and one hundred percent expenditures. Um, so the, the final number, you know, in the books will probably be different than that because we'll have uncompleted projects or, you know, unspent personnel, things like that, that can, can roll in, um, and make the ending fund balance actually higher than, uh, what we're showing here. Um, but also, you know, a hundred million dollars seems like a lot, but we are trying to be strategic, um, with how we're thinking about that. So while it's listed as a, in a category called uncommitted, um, you know, we, we are thinking about these other projects like the detention facility, um, the safety net programs that we've been talking about, um, you know, being a backstop for and things like that. So a hundred million dollars is a good number, but we are looking at things to use it for. It's not just sitting in the bank.
Can I add something?
Yes.
But I think something we didn't say, um, fund balance is not used for ongoing. So we would not use fund balance to fund pay increases or new permanent FTE, for example, but really it's for, um, one-time expenses within, uh, a year, not ongoing operating. There's some flexibility in the reserve policy to use fund balance up to two years, but that is a board policy directive, um, that you would have to, uh, you know, direct for, for us to be able to do that. But I think sometimes there's confusion about, you know, that hundred million we can do things with it that we really can't. Um, and so it's important to kind of keep that in mind, too. Talking about what types of backfill projects or support we could use fund balance for, um, you know, that that's how we would utilize that.
Um, so next is the, the capital facilities fund. All the same assumptions holding true there. You can see that a lot of, uh, our fund balance for this year is allocated to projects. So we, we have the fund balance. We're bringing in the forty, uh, almost forty five million in revenues. That's sales tax plus transfers and interest. So for anyone who's confused about the forty million dollar amount from the last presentations, um, and seeing forty five here, that's sales tax plus. Um, I guess if you want to look at it that way. Um, so we're projected to end the year at, uh, just over thirteen million in available fund balance. Get caveat that again with what actually happens. That number may be different. Um, there is no strategic reserve in this fund, um, currently, although we have, uh, internally discussed some possibilities there and we're, are open to making suggestions on that, um, through the budget process. All of these funds are restricted for the use on capital facilities, um, because that's what the sales tax is approved for. Um, and then there's another subset of the COP funds that are restricted to use for those specific projects. Moving on to the road and bridge fund, um, so I, I mean, I can go down the line there. We have the, the fifteen million dollar strategic reserve policy. Um, that, that policy was set several years ago, um, based on, uh, recognizing regional commitments and, uh, the ability to react to say some kind of a road disaster, wanting to keep funds within this fund, uh, to be flexible and also that we would have committed, uh, you know, for future, um, regional projects, for instance, the E four seventy project that's going on out here where we make large payments kind of overnight. They don't flow out slowly like a construction project more when the bill is due, it's the full amount. You can see it's restricted for the use, uh, for road and bridge projects. We do have the element that's related to, um, the COP funded projects. Um, and then you'll also see the traffic impact fees. That's a significant revenue source and a significant portion, um, of the fund balance, and those are restricted in their use towards capacity improvement projects. Um, and the last category is, uh, committed for the percent for the arts program. That's the two percent of all capital construction. Um, and those amounts, um, if they're unspent in a year, they are committed to be spent in a future year because the art doesn't always go at the same time as the capital project. Um, so moving on to the social services fund, um, you can see we have, uh, a beginning fund balance of close to sixteen million. Ending fund balance with a little bit of a spend down, uh, budgeted. We do have reserves and designation. So, uh, we have the five million dollar, uh, strategic reserve, which was set earlier this year um, by this board, just sort of the, we're not going to spend down below this amount without, uh, checking in with, uh, you first. So that's why we set that aside. And then the title for each hour welfare funds that are, um, set aside that was so im- imposed on us by, um, I think the state. So you see here, we have many, many other funds. So within our special revenue funds, we, we commonly will keep just a minimum balance so that there's, uh, enough cash in the bank, if you will, to, um, to pay the bills. Um, but we don't have, uh, you know, necessarily any major, uh, strategic reserve policies for every single fund. Same thing with the enterprise funds. Typically with those, we'll try and keep, um, you know, a minimum balance, uh, in our projections of, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, um, just to ensure that the, the bank balance doesn't go too low. Um, and in our, uh, for example, our fleet fund, um, will keep reserved a, uh, a percentage of the assets within the fund. If some sort of disaster were to happen and we had to replace a bunch of our fleet, um, overnight from, you know, floods or things like that.
I'm sorry, can we go back to the social services fund slide? Thank you. So the strategic reserve policy for the B O C T wants to keep five million. Have we dipped into that this year? When in the past has the board done that or what, you know, what's the? I understand the reasoning behind it makes sense to always have a reserve, but I'm asking, I'm just curious how it's been used.
So we have not dipped into that. Um, we are projected to end the year, uh, well above that five million dollar amount. Um, and as far as have we before, that's a new policy this year. Uh, so we just, we just added that formally.
Last year for this year.
Yeah.
All right.
For this year, sorry.
It was a twenty twenty four board approval.
Correct.
Okay, so before you came onto the board, I think it was in October or something of twenty twenty four, the board established this fund balance policy.
So we've not had any conversations about if, what, if anything, we're going to do with that. To, to, to date, have we?
No.
I thought's, no, the answer is no. Yeah, okay.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I didn't think we, I didn't think so, but I, but I thought, you know, I thought maybe I missed it, uh, potentially because, you know, we all travel. Okay, Steve, I saw Steve, thank you for, thank you. Any questions?
Okay, Steve.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I think part of the, the history for, for Julie and Kathy is this, uh, I, I got frustrated last year and it kind of became a contentious issue on the board of like when we were going to do what's called a draw, drawdown, um, there was that fund balance that you saw and, um, my concern is that as we were spending more, I just wanted to see that we had some sort of like, um, some sort of internal standard or policy that said, said, okay, what is it that is necessary or reasonable for us to have? And staff came back and said, we should never go down below five. And then that allowed them to do what I look, it was confusing though, because they went and they asked us for approval to spend it down. And then they said, we weren't spending it down and now it looks like we're down to eight hundred, eight million. So I'm kind of confused as to, can we get the history here to understand like, what was it last year when you guys came to us? Why did you come to us with the spend down? I think it was with Noel. And then where are we now?
So yeah, we, I mean, we can get the full history on that, but I would, if you're looking at the fund balance numbers, um, we are ending the year or projecting to end the year with just under fifteen million. So the, the spend down is the difference between this fifteen point seven and fourteen point eight. And then that five million is actually part of this six point seven million. And then the balance between five million and this number is the title for funds that we have within the fund balance. Um, with the available being eight at the end of the year.
So it's really, so really what is available is eight plus five. And five is sort of, we told you we wouldn't spend that until we told you we were going to spend it, you know, just an FYI. Eight is really, really free and the other five is still very flexible money at the board's discretion.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful, that's helpful.
And, and why, why in the past did we allow it to get to fifteen? Maybe you can explain that. Was it because at one point we said that was a better number or is it just that it was building up over time and we just never tapped into it?
That's it, it's just built up over time. So it's really, it's all flexible because it's all access, the property tax contribution that would for the match, for all the federal programs.
Yeah.
If they have positions that go vacant, they aren't spending that match because they aren't hiring positions to spend the grant money so that match stays. Fun, if you haven't swept that back historically, it's something, it's really very flexible and it could be used towards any of these programs. So it could be swept back to the general fund because it is just property tax.
And, and that's good to know that this eight million could be used for a variety of different things, either, either clawed back to product, uh, general fund or it could be used for some of these other uses. It's kind of like we, we just oversaved over time and, and then said, okay, what's the amount we want to have as our minimum? And we identified five million as the reasonable amount.
So just to clarify your statement, all of the eight million dollars could be swept back into general fund?
Yeah, the eight, the eight is all excess property tax contributions that were put in there to match these federal programs. And because they weren't used, it's sat there and built up, so.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Thanks.
Um, so I mean, this is just, that concludes really the summary on our, our fund balance designations. Um, and, you know, we'll continue as we bring forward projects that are related to a special fund balance designation to identify that and make sure it's clear if it's coming from a specific pot of money. Um, you know, we, this is a tool and also an accounting, uh, requirement that, uh, helps us to, to be strategic and also, uh, conservative in our budgeting. We'll figure it out, I think.
I guess I have one quick question. So would that be the, so the question we just had about social services funds, the ending fund balance, those are all funds that in can they, all of those remaining fund balances go into the general fund or some of them are, or not?
The only part that's restricted is that there's about one point six million for that child for E.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm sorry, like other funds, like the capital facilities fund, things like, those are, okay.
Yeah, so most of our special revenue funds, that special revenue, that revenue comes in for a specific purpose and it, and it needs to stay in there for that purpose.
So of the funds we just discussed, social services is the one that has flexibility that could, okay, thank you, that's what I want.
Yeah, and somehow I can.
You are aware, I'm sure someone will come up.
You did a great job. Thanks, reshare.
So we are going to keep coming at you with information. This one's going to get a little bit more granular, I think, in terms of our property tax outlook. Um, we recently, as of August twenty fifth, received the preliminary certification from the assessor's office, which tells us all of our taxable property, real and personal property within the county that's subject to our county property tax mill levy. And based on twenty twenty four, the final assessed value and then the twenty twenty five preliminary assessed value, we had an increase of about six point three percent. So it was a, a bit of a surprise increase to, um, our group. We had been working with the assessor who was concerned things were going to be really, really flat. Um, we'll walk through really where that came from, um, but a six point three percent increase uh, for taxable values in twenty twenty five for collections in twenty twenty six. And as we walk down, that translates into, uh, an increase in property taxes across all funds of twenty one million, four hundred and five thousand dollars. And then as part of that certification, there's also what's called abatements. And when the, when people, I'm going to probably misspeak on this, Heidi, you'll probably need to fill me in. But basically when they challenge their values to the assessor's office and they go through an appeals process and, and either something was wrong in their property taxes, either the classification or the values, and they get basically refunded to the taxpayer. And those come out of our current year collections and then we're able to recapture them in the following year, but then that's it. So we saw a huge uptick in the number of abatements. In twenty twenty four, for this year, we were collecting back two, two million dollars, two point one million dollars in abatements and that number jumped to nine point four. So it's money that's available to be collected in next year's budget in the general fund, so we see it as an increase. But it will go away the following year, so we're really cautious to not build that into our outlook going forward. So, um, you'll see this number pop up in these property taxes, but it's not an ongoing source of money for us.
Yeah, and I think the only thing I would add is just that the abatements, as mentioned here in particular, are not part of the normal tax appeal process that you guys see numbers for the Board of Equalation. You'll get like a, a rundown of all, that's the mass appeal where we have hundreds, if not thousands of appeals processed and we're in that right now. Those actually reduce the value prior to collection, so those don't get reimbursed to the taxpayer. So these, we're just talking about the ones that are appealed post-payment.
Yes.
Um, and it's either through, um, like my office processed some abatements through hearings. Um, some are just stipulations from the assessor's office and then also anything that goes to the B A A, the Board of Assessment Appeals at the state level, and they are successful or there's a stipulation, those get abated as well.
We've seen those in our agenda.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so just a walk, uh, for what to expect next year. And then we've talked about this Senate Bill twenty four B dash one zero zero one. And that really is meant to ease the, what was back in twenty twenty four, we saw that big spike, uh, to ease that ongoing increase in property taxes to the, uh, residents of the state and the county specifically here. So what happened then is they, they, they made various changes to the assessment rates going forward. So as you get a taxable value, how much of that value is subject, um, to taxes is called the assessment rate and they bring it down. Um, and then we apply our mill levy to that new assessed value. So, for example, the, the biggest change I think for us is going to be on the commercial side and then followed by residential. The commercial this year from twenty twenty four certifications we collect in twenty twenty five, they had a methodology that it took out thirty thousand dollars from their actual value and then twenty seven point nine percent was subject to, uh, property taxes. This year they dropped that to twenty seven percent, so a slight decrease. Next year that's dropping to twenty twenty five percent and that's where we start talking about this out year look. That's a big change, that's a ten million dollar decrease in one year. So we're going to go up and then back down. We'll get, we'll get into these a little bit more. I just wanted to give you a baseline for where we're calculating these. And residential is a similar, it was six point seven minus fifty five thousand. It's really been an exercise for the assessor's office, I think, to keep track and, and apply all of these. And for this year's values going into next year, there's really two different scenarios that are at play and the statewide growth is what drives it. So statewide, the growth in values is less than five percent, the assessed value, the assessed rate is six point two five. And if it's greater than five percent, it'll be six point one five, which will go down. Currently, we're operating under the assumption that it's six point two five, that's our early indications from DOLA told the assessor's office that. But it seems like it's getting, uh, it's a little closer than they were hoping, so we're not, uh, we don't have a hundred percent certainty in this number yet. And the difference between these two, just for, uh, just for, just pointed out is about two million dollars in property tax revenue. So should they come in lower, it's going to be a slight deduction or reduction from what we were planning for next year. And then twenty twenty six is, is really a, another significant change. They take ten percent off of the home value up to seven hundred grand. And then apply, again, depending on the growth, one of these two different assessment rates. So really fuzzy, hard to track, uh, math without all of the data, but the assessor's office has been generous with sharing data down to, you know, the houses and, and a big file, so we can do some of the math on these, uh, to project out next year, so we have a little bit more certainty as to what's happening. And similar with property, personal property and industrial and state assessed, those are trending down as well. Um, but don't have quite the level of impact as the commercial or residential.
Question before you move on, um, so you mentioned that under the commercial, um, uh, tax that in twenty twenty six rate, we're looking at about a ten million dollar decrease. What does that look like for the residential?
So residential is, is smaller, it's, um, it was in the two million range, it was, it's about two point one percent of our total collections. Um, I don't think I put that in here, but yeah, it's, it's significantly smaller. It's still a decrease and big, um, on a, we'll walk through an example of a house in just a minute. I'll show you what that's doing to a specific homeowner over time with their house and then a commercial property. But it's, uh, it's much smaller than the commercial piece.
Okay, thanks.
And that was a ten, not ten percent, that was a ten, going back to the commercial, your question about commercial was ten million.
Ten million, yeah, yep. And so the certified value we received in twenty twenty five, just, just a month ago or so in commercial, and this is the, um, the net taxable, was a sixteen percent increase in commercial. It was actually nineteen percent, but because of the, um, the TIFs and everything else, it, the taxable value is sixteen percent up. And what that's going to do, that drives a lot of our increase that we talked about, where we're going to have a, an increase in property taxes next year. But then doing the math, they aren't going to reassess these, so that number should stay the same, apart from new construction or any significant improvements. And doing the math from twenty seven percent to twenty five percent causes a seven point four percent reduction for collections in twenty twenty seven. And then going down the list, um, we had a pretty big decrease in the assessed values for oil and gas this year. That dropped twenty percent compared to last year. Residential was up two percent overall. We had pockets of increase, pockets of decrease, but, um, overall residential went up two percent. And then that brings us to our twenty twenty six budget. We've budgeted right now, based on those values, we're at three hundred and sixty eight million dollars in property tax collections next year compared to three hundred and forty one this year. But due to those various changes in legislation, we're going to come back down to about three hundred and forty six. So this number includes a, a modest new construction growth. We're sort of in the dark of what that'll actually be, but we're, we're coming back close to where we are this year. So we're, we're, we're taking this multi-year approach where we look out and sort of smooth our budget over the next two years because we don't want to spend it all in one year because we're going to give up a good chunk of it the following year. So to the extent we can keep our operating budget on a more steady path and not follow, you know, the ups and downs like this, I think we'll be better off for that. So we're being really, really cautious in, in terms of how much we add to our ongoing base budget and make sure it's affordable and sustainable and we can continue this into the out years. We don't want to do anything right now, um, that would, we would have to undo, you know, you know, in out years, so. With that being said, I'm going to walk you through, I just did a quick example of a house, not any particular house, just a random. So the median value house is somewhere between five and six hundred thousand dollars. So I picked a six hundred thousand dollar home. What that would do this year for their value this year and the way the taxes are working, our mill levy generates one thousand four dollars from that house, from our twenty seven mills, almost twenty seven mills. That house next year with the ten percent reduction would be a sixty thousand dollar reduction. And then at the new assessment rate would generate nine hundred and eighty four dollars, so twenty bucks per homeowner, less in county property taxes. They're also going to see savings on schools and metro districts and unless they are able to raise their mill levies for debt or whatever. But in general, they would see similar reductions across everybody that taxes them on their home. And then the average, not average, a million dollar commercial value property would generate seven thousand, two hundred and thirty five dollars for the county based on our existing mills and that would drop to six thousand, six hundred and ninety nine the ni- the next year. So that's a seven, over seven percent decrease on the commercial. So that's basically a picture of what's happening at a very, very granular level times, you know, the hundreds of thousands of parcels we have. So that gets us to that, that decrease we're expecting in that second year in that twenty twenty seven collection.
Okay, something more?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we talked at the beginning about the kind of two-year outlook and this slide, this presentation is really getting to the why. You know, as we're looking at some of the requests that we have from departments and overall what we're trying to do in next year, for next year. When you look at the graph, it may seem like, well, you know, it's a big deal if we're at the same level in a couple of years as we are this year. What's not accounted for is over the next couple of years, how many FTE will we add? What kind of increases to salaries will we add? What other operating costs are going to continue to go up? And if we're ratcheting back down to this year's levels in two years, then we're going to be, um, in the, in the negative. I mean, we will have to, as Mark said, we don't want to be in a position to have to undo some of those decisions.
I mean, we will have to, as Mark said, we don't want to be in a position to have to undo some of those decisions. And so part of what our strategy is going to be this year is being really cautious about adding to our base operating budget um, in twenty six, because we know that we're going to have this ratcheting down in twenty seven. So that looks like maybe less capacity for new F T E. That looks like trying to smooth out when we're doing things like um, pay increases, which we'll talk about in a moment. Um, we're really cautious about doing a high pay increase this year and then next year having to drop that down, you know, to zero or something like that. Because it's gonna be really hard on our employees. And so that's just sort of the, the approach that we're taking. It's really looking at twenty six as a stabilizing year and in preparation for um, holding steady in twenty seven.
Oh, we did. Steve?
She literally just hit the nail on the head. How we handle pay increases will determine the level of discomfort this board has in a couple of years.
When he's gone.
When he's gone, yeah.
That, that's why, that, that is important to know though, is that like, it's just a distribution of, of pain and discomfort. But I'm telling you, like, the more careful we are, I think, Dion, you literally just hit it the nail. That was what I was gonna ask you about is, does this mean we should be careful about overextending ourselves over the next two years? Either with F T E counts or with uh pay increases um versus like maybe one-time bonuses and things like that. I don't know what the answer is, but I, I'm open for that discussion. You said it's coming up next, so I'm gonna just let it happen.
Yeah, but that's right. That's, that's sort of how we're looking at it. Um, and you know, it may be a little challenging to explain when you look at the numbers for twenty six and see property tax collections look like they're going up. Um, but this is really why, and you know, as we're talking about this with our community, we just want to be really transparent about that outlook. And what we're hoping to do is keep it more stable for everybody in the long term.
Yes, thank you.
Now we're officially lunchtime, but since we're behind on hear more about the benefits and, yeah.
Okay, everyone ready?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think everyone knows me. I'm Cindy Bureau, your helpful benefits manager.
You're very helpful. Thank you, Cindy.
Um, we're gonna go over the twenty twenty six benefit renewal for both our employees and retirees. Okay, so thought we'd include some background information. It, this is the process that happens every year. We received, typically receive rate changes from our carriers. We look at possible plan changes for the upcoming year. And um, an overview of the process is people and culture works with the executive leadership team and finance on plan options and what will be recommended. Um, these are presented to the commissioners uh for approval. Then um, whatever's decided, um, we leap into action and implement those approved changes. Um, open enrollment is typically in November. And then the plan changes are effective January first. So probably everyone's pretty familiar with going through open enrollment. Um, and our objective today is to um, present our twenty twenty six recommendations for your consideration and approval. Okay, so just to recap, these are the benefit plans we offer to our employees. Medical, dental, vision, life, short and long-term disability. And then for our retirees, we have pre-sixty-five medical, dental, vision, and then Medicare plans. And let's start, we'll start with the easy, easy plan. And uh, we will start with employee coverage, dental and vision. And this year, we're gonna look at it a little differently. We're gonna look at it at both um, a per employee per month cost. And then also as an annual cost. Because uh, the difference in, in those can be uh fairly significant. So on the dental plan, we're looking at about an increase of five point nine percent on an annual basis. So about thirty-two thousand dollars. But what we estimate is a cost per employee per enrolled every month is staying the same. Um, and then on the vision plan, we're pretty much the same for our estimated annual cost. And also our per employee per month cost is staying the same. Now, with the dental plan, the annual cost is going up because we have a hundred and thirty-four more employees enrolled since our last renewal, since we first started looking at numbers. So that's why you're gonna see a higher annual increase. But the amount that's, you know, estimated per employee enrolled is still the same. We just have more people in the plans.
Can I ask a quick, quick clarifying question? So, so is, is Adams County paying more per employee per month? And we're just covering all the costs or?
Um, in both of these, no. The per employee month, per, per employee per month cost is staying the same. But there is more money charged to Adams County overall on an annual basis, because we just have more people enrolled.
Because we have more people.
Yeah, so what we pay is more. Okay, life and disability. All of these benefits are offered at no cost to our employees. So with basic life and the always fun accidental death and dismemberment. And then basic long-term disability. Um, we're um, the estimate for twenty twenty five was about one point three million. We're estimating that's gonna go up to two. And then short-term disability. Um, it was estimated at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And we're estimating that's going to go up to two hundred and fifty thousand. Now, why is that? We've had a significant increase in short-term disability claims being filed. And, and one thing, I, I'm gonna backtrack a little bit. For those of you who don't know the fun of health insurance and life and disability. Um, we can be what's called, you can be fully insured or self-insured or self-funded. And let, let's say our Kaiser medical plan is fully insured. Kaiser takes all the risk and they say you pay this amount of money in a premium. But the United Healthcare Plans, even our short-term disability plan in our dental and vision, we pay our own claims. So the upside is if we have low claims years, we get to save money. Downside is, is if you have large claims experience, you know, you have to pay those claims. So that's why we have short-term disability broken out separately, because we pay our own short-term disability claims on that. And once again, a hundred and seventy-eight more enrollments were on the plan. Um, so that's what we have estimated for those plans. Okay, the employee medical. So this is gonna be the biggest one, the most complex. Uh, we offer four plans for our employees. Under United Healthcare, we have the E P O, which is the most popular, the Colorado Doctor's Plan and a high deductible health plan. And then we offer a plan through Kaiser Permanente. It is an H M O. And they call it their twenty-dollar plan, because the co-pay for an office visit is twenty dollars. So. Um, and all of these plans are really different. So we are able to cover any employee's needs on the medical. So that's why we have several of those, you know, deductibles are different, premiums, out-of-pocket max, so whatever their need is. Now, what are employees enrolled in? Well, uh, you know, Kaiser used to be, you know, ahead in the race a little. Now, United Healthcare has uh pulled ahead. Forty-eight percent of those enrolled are in a United Healthcare Plan with the E P O Plan being the most popular plan. It is the most rich plan. It's the most expensive plan, but employees like it. And then the Colorado Doctor's Plan and High Deductible each have nine percent. But really, we're, we're pretty close on Kaiser and United, what, what employees like. And then thirteen percent have waived medical. Okay, so here um, is our, the last few years of renewal. Um, twenty twenty-two, look, Kaiser went down. That doesn't happen much, but United went up five percent. Twenty twenty-three, yish, they were both about ten percent increase. Now, in twenty twenty-four is when we started pooling these in, these renewals. And that was so we would avoid any large swings. You know, because you can have a plan with a horrible claim experience one year and you, you're gonna get hit the next year in premiums. And we don't want wide swings in enrollment on either of our plans, especially United. Because it'll just spiral that plan if everyone leaves it and you're left with only the sick people on it. So um, because what, since twenty eighteen, the average increase, when we averaged the increases on Kaiser and United was about three and a half percent for each. So over time, it does moderate. So la- uh, twenty twenty-four, five point three percent. Twenty twenty-five, we're looking at seven point eight three percent was, was our pooled increase. So, you know, um, it's, it's all over the place. There's no, you know, rhyme or reason on that. Okay, so here's this screen. So from an annual perspective for both United and Kaiser Plans, the annual cost is estimated to increase by twenty-four percent, seven point six million. Why is that? We have three hundred and seventy-eight more people enrolled in our medical plans. That's how much the enrollment has changed. Now, where does that come from? It comes from new positions. It comes from vacant positions being filled and then mid-year enrollments. And this is where we have a lot of those. So let's say an employee had waived our coverage. They're like, I'm on my spouse's plan. We love it. And then for some reason, maybe their spouse lost their job. Or their spouse's employer changed their plans. They didn't like them anymore. They made a year, mid-year change and moved to our plan. Because the per employee per month cost has gone up about seven, nine percent for each plan. So the per employee per month cost did go up, but nowhere near the twenty-four percent. It's just that all of those new people on the plan cost money. Now, it is a shock. But Mark, could you speak to kind of what you do on the budget side with, with I don't know if you want to call it a placeholder or something?
Yeah, so when we add positions during the year on an amendment or anything else, we tell you the total cost of the and that includes all this, the medical law and anything they might enroll in that would cost the county some money. We guesstimate, we always plan on for a vacant position or a new employee, the two-party rate. Because they can come in and select a single or a family or something in the middle. So we sort of pick the middle as a baseline projection for all positions that don't have a current election. Um, and so then during the annual budget process, we build these in to our base numbers. We, we plan on a nine percent increase this year. We nailed it. Frankly, it was total wag. But um, we put in a placeholder of nine percent for the county medical insurance going up. And then any position that's eligible for those benefits uh, that is vacant or already has an election, we plan those out. So that number is not uh alarming to us, because it's, we've been planning on all these positions taking these benefits anyways. So we've had some savings where maybe they didn't, you know, they chose a different plan or their spouse's plan and now they're coming over to ours. But we typically have the budget in place for these employees anyways.
Yeah, because I was like, ah, Mark, uh, check the couch cushions. Gotta do something.
Conversations about the outlook for this. And that last um bullet point there that Cindy was talking about is something that we're starting to talk about and could be attention to. You know, Adams County, we've been pretty fortunate when it comes to being stable and being able to offer um pretty decent health plans. But as we're seeing, like, the economy and the community, again, spouses uh maybe losing coverage and things like that. Um, that may be a, a new burden on the county that we just hadn't anticipated. And so we've been having conversations about what that may look like in the next couple of years and how the county can afford that, you know, if that's something that's happening truly outside of necessarily even our own employees. But i- if their spouse or family is, benefits are changing, Medicaid is mentioned here. Families might be losing coverage elsewhere and the county is taking on more of that through our employees. It's something that we have to start accounting for. So we've had some conversations about how we'll be tracking that going forward. Um, because it's definitely a concern and we want to be able to provide, you know, support to employees and their families. But our resources might get a little more strained from that. So we're watching that.
Yeah, yeah. So from, you know, when, when I do renewal, I'm, oh, Commissioner Odoricio?
Don't, don't, don't answer his question.
Oh, okay.
Why don't you go ahead and finish? When you do a renewal, go ahead and finish and then I'll ask.
Okay, sounds good. Um, I look at enrollments during renewal and then the budget department, they're looking at, yeah. They allocate a certain percentage. Um, so it's a little different. It's a little confusing. So I wanted Mark to speak to that, because this is unusual. This is the first time I've seen it and I've been here since twenty eighteen, this kind of increase. Oh, okay.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to give a heads up to the, to the newbies. At each year, we have these conversations. And I, this is now what, the eleventh year and not including when I was an employee before watching these. Um, in, in reality, every year, we, we have folks like me that just complain about how much we hate Kaiser, but we never leave it. Um, and then we have the situations um, where, I'm just letting you know that overall, the balance between the Kaiser and the United thing has been outstanding. Because from the employee's standpoint, we're always giving them choice. And then from the organizational standpoint, it creates a risk balancing uh strategy. Like that was mentioned earlier about ha- having the, the um self-insured plan with United covered with the kind of leveling out of Kaiser. So each year, I kind of bash my head about how to fix this and change everything. And at the end of the day, it's usually just a little bit of tweaks around the edges to try to keep it a good plan overall offering for everyone as well as keeping it for the organization. But I just want to kind of dump that, because we go through this every year and every time it's just like, comes back to, wow, this is a really good program we have set up. Uh, outside of the fact that I'm convinced, no offense if we have any brokers in the room, we don't need the damn brokers. We got the best people that are working on it. We have
Well, yes, yes.
It's the staff that are working, the staff that are working on this are the ones who get it done. The brokers never are able to actually create any sort of uh negotiation for us in the time I've been here. I say we just let our staff handle it if we're allowed to. Thanks.
Emma? Um, after giving him crap, I actually appreciate Steve's comments. I think the tension is really around the thesis of the broker is to save you all time and make the process more efficient. And I think that as old timers, we're feeling a little sunburned for how it went with the broker uh process at last cycle. And so in general, I have been supportive of using a broker to help assemble this data, help get us on the right path, help negotiate, help evaluate options, because they do it for, you know, probably dozens of employers all at the same time in their various teams and offices that have the best knowledge. I think that I, I hear where Steve's coming from. I'm a little more interested in listening to this conversation after we had the mistakes from the broker last year. But I also defer to the team, because as much as we have really smart, competent people who do this for us, the point of a broker is that they do it for a lot of people and can say what's happening. and can say what's happening on the market, not just what is your experience. And so, I'm just kind of curious if you could talk through broker oversight, value add, time spent. What does that look like?
I will say this, I, you know, and I appreciate what Commissioner Odoricio said, but we typically call them consult, they're consultant brokers. And this is part of what they do for us. And they do help with leverage and negotiations and working with different carriers. And what a lot of folks don't see is the day-to-day compliance that's helped with. I'm sending out this silly Medicare Part D notice. If our plans are credible coverage, got to do it by the fifteenth. And I'm going to need them to do an actuarial analysis to see if our plans actually comply with the Inflation Reduction Act because those changes really made a lot of changes to Medicare. So, I do need them to do that. I mean, you could try, but I'd probably be running around kind of crazy. And, yeah, more crazy.
Industry knowledge is helpful for you more than just the plan acquisition.
Right, and right now, working with the brokers on, you know, trying to get ahead of the trend, you know, international, Canada, UK sourcing of certain name-brand drugs, looking at a lot of different solutions we might be able to do to keep a high level of coverage, but keep the cost down. Because I always say, this is unsustainable. We end up being kind of just reactionary. And this is, twenty twenty-six will be more stability. While we, you know, we already have a meeting scheduled first, you know, probably January to start planning for twenty twenty-seven, so.
Can you talk about the oversight component, though, so that we have some understanding? So, we don't have the big accounting error? I don't know how.
Well, what had happened was, they had a lot of turnover in their account manager role, and they forgot to disclose all the plan changes on the new Kaiser plan we were going to go with. And then, when I was going through and I pulled a document right from Kaiser, there were some significant plan differences that weren't communicated. And, you know, significant enough to say, would the commissioners have chosen this plan? If they knew we had all those plan changes? So, that's what that was. They missed it, and it wasn't caught until after open enrollment.
John, do you want to share more about the oversight and sort of what we're doing?
Yeah, and it's all to itself as promised, multi-layer oversight on what they're doing. And based on that experience, based on the board's feedback, we are in the process of working with our purchasing department on going out for bid for a benefits broker this coming year. We were under contract with them this year, and so we utilize that contract. But we're currently working with ELT on the scope of this contract, and that will be built into the scope as we go out to bid to ensure that there is significant oversight. Cindy and I are working almost on a daily basis nowadays, reviewing the information that we're getting from the vendor. But yeah, that has been paramount in our conversations as we move forward, looking at our options.
I think it ought to be that should be up at the end of this year, I would say. Expect a new broker through that process.
Great, thanks.
Okay. More employee medical. This is a new plan we'll be offering from Kaiser. It's called their Everyday Care Plan A. Really, the purpose of this plan is for the folks who, maybe they don't really use their medical insurance very much. Maybe they just do their office visits here and there. Maybe I don't have any fancy name-brand prescriptions. Kaiser has said, look, if you offer a second plan from us, they will put in an eight point five percent rate cap for twenty twenty-seven on all of our plans. They will cover the first twelve mental health visits with a zero-dollar copay without increasing the premiums at all. And by adding a lower-cost plan, when we pool our premiums, it's going to bring down those pooled premiums a little bit, from seven point eight three pooled increase to seven point seven nine percent. Because it's a cheaper plan. The premium's lower for employees and Adams County. And it gives folks an option. You know, because the Kaiser plan we have in place now, that's, you know, going to be those, the left hand in that middle column, current and renewal. That's a, it's a very generous plan, basically a copay-based plan. This Everyday Care Plan, look at that. Going to a doctor or a specialist, zero copay. Your labs and x-rays, zero dollar. That's really nice. Generics is zero-dollar copay. But if you were to have inpatient services, this plan is going to, you have to meet a deductible than the coinsurance. But it's giving people options. They don't have to go to this one.
Yeah, much higher deductibles and max out-of-pocket costs.
Right. But your premium's going to be lower, which is nice. And it saves the county some money, too. And that's only, we're estimating a ten percent migration moving over. If it's more, then the county saves more. Okay, so here are the pooled premiums for the, I put the EPO plan here because it's the most popular one. And the premiums are going anywhere, going up anywhere from about nine dollars to thirty-nine dollars a month for premiums. On the Kaiser Plan, also going up anywhere from about nine dollars a month to thirty-eight. And you can see, if you look at the twenty twenty-six HMO premium for single coverage, it's about a hundred and seventeen a month. The Everyday Care Plan is about one oh-two. So, it'll save employees some money. Especially when you look at family coverage. The current plan we have is about five twenty-seven, and the Everyday Care Plan is about four fifty-seven. So, it can save folks money if they're just not big users of the medical insurance. Okay, any questions on medical dental vision so far? Okay, clinic therapy services. So, let's kind of jump to a whole nother topic. So, we use a company called Minds and Associates for mental health counseling services through our clinics. We are now looking at options for this due to the fact that utilization continues to be low since the pandemic. We've been trying to get it up. It hovers around sixty percent. But the problem is, is we pay Minds for twenty-four hours a week regardless. So, that, what that does, it pushes your per-visit cost up pretty high. You know, about a hundred and seventy to a hundred and eighty when, if you look at a contracted rate for United Healthcare, it costs ninety-five dollars a visit. So, you know, the other issue is, is that you only have one therapist available. And if you don't like that therapist, eh, not a help to you. Plus, it turns out several departments and offices offer their own mental health services, you know, because of what they do. Sheriff, coroner, human services, the Health Department, District Attorney's Office. So, we need to look at this.
I mean, if you go back, that's more than half our staff, right? More than half our staff have a bespoke or like customized to their field therapy offering when you bundle like all of these different departments.
Yeah, and it was, you know, there was higher utilization before, and it made, you know, easy access. It worked. Is it working now? So, what is being recommended is that we discontinue the contract with Minds, and instead, we enhance our medical plan coverage for mental health to cover the first twelve visits for a zero-dollar copay in a calendar year. Additional visits would only be a twenty-dollar copay if they're needed. And this would apply basically to all plans except the United High Deductible Health Plan because that's the IRS putting in rules on that. But, you know, there isn't a way around that. But, and then it's managed within a medical plan, which is nice. And woo-hoo, I can choose from, you know, I have a lot of people to choose from now. Oh, I got ahead of myself, sorry. But it is a more effective use of funds. Now, while we, you know, like to be conservative, and we're estimating an increase in cost to the United Healthcare, our claims that we pay out, we're not paying for visits that aren't happening. We're only paying for when people use it, you know. It won't increase the premiums because, when you back out the cost we're paying to Minds on an annual basis, it's what, a hundred and fifty thousand more a year? And when you're looking at thirty million that we spend annually on medical, it's a small amount. So, so, yeah, and like I said, more access makes it affordable for folks. So, cost shouldn't be a barrier with this. Okay, jumping onto pre-sixty-five medical. Okay, so for those lucky people that get to retire before they're sixty-five.
Good luck.
Oh, what?
I wish them good luck. That sounds.
Yeah. I know, I'm like, hmm. Basically, everything we offer to our active employees, we offer to our pre-sixty-five, we offer as a pre-sixty-five medical plan. We do offer two Medicare Advantage Plans and Dental and Vision. And the county provides a subsidy or county contribution towards the retire, only the retirees' medical premiums. Okay, so Dental and Vision? No plan design changes, no increase to premiums. Pretty easy, like on the employee side. Pre-sixty-five medical, this is a, this is one where we're going to be looking at longer-term solutions. But it's a large increase on the UHC EPO plan. We only have seventeen people enrolled, and it's going up fifty-two percent because it only takes one large claim, and that's what we had. And you can't even collect enough premiums to cover, you know, a two-hundred-thousand-dollar claim. So, it is a lot of money. We offer coverage for the entire family. I'll tell you this, no one's enrolled in the family coverage. It's usually, you know, a spouse or the retiree. So, those are going up significantly, but we want to look at, like I said, longer-term solutions. The pre-sixty-five Kaiser also going up, you know, fifteen, from ten to fifteen percent. But it's still a more affordable plan for our retirees. This is, this has about fifty-four people enrolled in it because it is more affordable. It's a good plan, and we would also offer them that Everyday Care Plan A. So, instead of their premium being seven ninety-one a month, if it works for them, six hundred and nine dollars a month. So, nice option for those retirees. And some retirees enroll in this because UHC is too expensive.
How do we define a retiree under this to be eligible for this benefit?
You have to be able to retire under the retirement plan, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, any questions on this? So, you know, we're not saying, you know, we're just saying, here's the increase. And it gets passed in total on to these folks, so. And there is no pooling of these premiums. The Advantage Plans, I will tell you this, we have very good Advantage Plans. The United Healthcare has experienced a significant, this is the second year of a significant increase on the UHC Medicare Advantage due to what's happening, how the government reimburses claims under Medicare. The retiree premium is going to go from one seventy-eight a month to two sixty-three. That's huge. So, Kaiser, only eleven percent increase. I asked them how they could do that, you know, because I don't know. Are they holding it down to get more people enrolled? I'm not sure. But Kaiser can control their costs a lot better because, you know, you're in their system. You can't go anywhere else. So, quite a significant increase for the Advantage Plan. And, you know, those are things we're going to look at, you know, starting in January. Do we offer two Advantage Plans? Maybe one that has higher deductibles or things like that to try to give them some options for being more affordable? But yeah, pretty big increase there. Okay, now, here's the summary of annual costs, and this is just to Adams County. And when you total everything up, the estimated increase is eight point four million increase. And then, our request is that the Board of County Commissioners approve the twenty twenty-six Employee and Retiree Benefit Plan Renewal with the following recommended change. And that is to stop offering services through our clinics from Minds and Associates, and instead, enhance the medical plans for the twelve visits at zero-dollar copay. And is that it? Okay. So, any questions on that?
I don't have any questions.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was just, I think, yeah.
No. Hey.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Now, and so, that's our theme. That's got to be what we have, that's what we have to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright. Hopefully we can uh, blaze through this, the, the, the purpose of this particular. Component of our presentation was just to kind of set the stage for the presentations you're gonna see over the next couple of days. So, you know, for the twenty twenty-six budget. There's been a, a significant ask, there's uh, forty-eight point six million in additional operating budget. Um, that's split pretty evenly between one-time uh, requests for only next year and. Ongoing increases to the operating budget. You see in the general fund, hundred and one new FTEs requested totaling close to thirteen million. Um, there's also a contemplation of transferring FTEs from the Social Services Fund to the General Fund. And so you can kind of see just the, the volume of. Request um, that you'll see from the individual departments as they give their presentations. Um, this is sort of the breakdown of the business case requests by fund. Um, and you can see, for the most part. There are some revenue offsets to these business cases, but uh, most of them would just be an ongoing operating increase. And here are the FTE requests, a little bit more granular uh, in detail. And finally, we, we reviewed the CIP a little bit earlier today, um, but I, I wanna note. As we kind of talked about these last three slides. You will see the further detail um, from departments, eh, each department is gonna present individually on their requests. Um, and then, um, as we have already discussed, we will be providing full summaries. Of every request throughout budget development, so when we talk about business cases and capital and FTEs, you'll. You will again see in those study sessions, the full ask, what was recommended, maybe what's not recommended. Um, throughout the whole, the whole process. A- a- and you know, we've talked about this a lot already today, but uh, just wanna reiterate that, you know, we have been. Trying to make sure that the budget we adopt this year does not create a problem for our budget that we need to adopt next year, so. Uh, looking at the, the impacts of the state legislation. Making sure that we don't uh, run into a problem with revenues retracting in twenty twenty-seven. And making sure we're strategic about which projects we prioritize. We wanna make sure that, really, we're, we're sustainable year over year. Um, so this is sort of the closing. Of these last couple of sessions. Any questions or thoughts or anything you'd like for us to bring back? You know, as we go through these presentations, please let us know and we'll prepare for them when we have our study sessions for budget development.
And I do wanna say, this is the lens that I've asked the entire budget team to keep in mind, N E L T, as we're reviewing all the requests. Um, I think our departments have tried to be very thoughtful, but also asked for what they need. But we, we won't be able to say yes to everything, um, and you know, we've kind of level set with them about that as well. We will have to make some choices, um, but we wanna hear from our departments about what their needs are, um, just understanding that, uh, given. That we have, we're trying to be as strategic as possible with this lens and the recommendations that I'll be presenting to you on October fourteenth. Find that, you know, the next month, but um, it's gonna be a, a good exercise, but. I don't want any expectations for folks that everything they've asked for is gonna be approved, cuz we, we, we won't be able to. Um, but we will try to hit the mark as much as possible.
As you've talked with directors um, about these presentations and their asks, has there also been? Questions, thoughts around, how can they decrease FTE to level out? That, with the asks, right, just because another department, I saw that, you know, the animal shelter has like five FTE requests or something like that. Um, I mean, like, uh, was there also a request of can you look and see what you're at and see if anyone could downsize?
That's so, we are doing an exercise to downsize from current FTE necessarily, though. Human Services has taken a really deep dive and looking at all of their positions and vacancies because they do have the additional. Changes in federal funding that are, are gonna come into play. Um, but what we've asked, what we started out with originally, our, you know, with our kickoff, was looking at what a. And then any ask that they have a solid business case takes into account, either there's increases in mandated services, required. Services, um, things like that, um, operational priorities that um, can't be completed unless they have. Q F T E, that kind of thing. In the last few weeks, we, we've had presentations from every department, like preliminary presentations. And departments were still refining, um, the ask, it's so part of what we've asked everyone to do in the presentations this week is really identify. What are the top priorities um, in your ask, and also if this isn't funded. How will you manage that and operate within that, um, cuz you know, it's. Apparently that everything won't be funded, so that's a conversation and a question that everybody's been asked to think about and present uh, to you all as well.
Okay, cuz you know, things happen, like Aurora decides to not. You know, like, so there's an FTE increase there, I mean, so I mean, there's gonna be asks that come along the way, and if we wanna try and stay flat. For the next two years, that means we will need to cut somewhere else to remain flat. So, I have, and, and I'm sure maybe this will come up in the conversation, but also just. Kind of thinking long-term, how do we create that flexibility to react to what comes ahead of us? Because there are gonna be new. Many legislative sessions ahead of us, there's gonna be new mandates, and so uh, being able to be flexible with that is gonna be really important, so. There will need to be cuts to keep the flat line, if that's our proposed goal is to keep it flat. Um, to weather the storm.
Ask our teams to review their operations fully.
Yeah.
In light of changing conditions, both at the federal level and in our general economy, and they are all doing that, um. So that they can get a sense of, do we need the same operational support?
Yeah.
We needed five years ago when things were going gangbusters, maybe not. And also, um, you'll hear from us here in a moment, CMO, where we'll talk about an organizational assessment too, to really see.
Yeah.
Are there some things we can be doing better, changing how we do? Business, can we leverage things a little bit better across the organization to reduce duplication and to really. Um, hone in on those prioritized operations, all of that. So, um, to Dion's point that she's been really driving home all day. That two-year assessment is really looking at all of those things stem to stern. How do we live within our revenue picture and how do we live in our best prioritized way?
I have one more thing to add, we'll cover the trifecta.
Do it.
The procedures we put into place to review vacancies before they're posted are also meant to address your concerns. Because it's much easier to repurpose a vacant position and we don't have to add FTE. If it's something we can hold off on doing, do we really need this function anymore, or should we use this vacancy for another mandated? Service that we have to provide, and so we, I think we've created a lot of flexibility. Going into next year by putting those procedures into place, and there are some departments that have been quite conservative and have held vacancies back so that they have flexibility. Um, and so we do have that opportunity, instead of eliminating an FTE that has a person in it. We have an opportunity to repurpose vacancies or even eliminate some of those vacancies to save money in order to manage through the next couple of years.
Did Steve have a question?
Thank you.
I, I think Kristen brought up a good point, and I think we're kind of all circling around the issue of, is it better to have flatter pay increases? If it means that we can continue to fill vacancies and help people with their load, you know, workload. Is it better to have fewer folks that get higher pay and then they're complaining the whole time about burnout and load? It's all gonna kind of go together, and I wonder, um, are we going to, in some situations, recognize that some departments might actually need to be treated differently than others? Where, you know, you might have to have one strategy in one department and a different strategy in another. In order for us to navigate this.
I think that's definitely a factor, we're looking at it as how are we treating our requests? Equitably, but not necessarily equally, and I think that that's really important, um. Nuance sometimes, there's some areas where we need to make more investments in order to meet our, our, our goals or to. Meet our mandates, um, and it's, it really does depend on the need. Um, and when we have that sort of equity lens, it's focused on the need and the outcomes that we're trying to achieve, and so that's a big part of the conversation. Um, and also what other uh, resources can we leverage, you know, things like we're talking about. FTE for the animal shelter, but we've also been talking about overall operational costs for the animal shelter with. Our municipalities, or we've been talking about the FTC and how we're going to split some of those costs potentially. Um, and also looking at one-time costs versus ongoing operating. And where are there opportunities for us to leverage one-time fund balance, for example, for um, priorities, but not necessarily increase the base. Operating budget um, forever, you know, so it's just trying to find that, that balance uh, with all of it.
That sounds great.
Perfect.
So we are actually gonna kick off one presentation, department presentation today. And we have a number of departments that aren't doing presentations because they didn't have any requests and they. Uh, we wanted to make sure and also share their budget details, even though they aren't requesting anything, they are included in. The budget, um, and so we'll share that and then we will be going over the CMO budget and. Doing that today and then starting Wednesday, we'll have all the other departments who will be presenting.
Can I start like a clarifying question, just like. I still have as an open question, at what point are we gonna be able to have a conversation on? The funding items that were not continued when we had to pull all the tenant reserve dollars in-house. Uh, particularly the housing stabilization money. Um, given everything we're seeing, housing stabilization is gonna continue to be. Critical issue for communities, and then for me, the co-occurring question of we didn't fund any of our school district food pantries. With our community grants, and so now we have a bunch of school districts who have unfunded essentials and food pantries. Those things, I, uh, we have traditionally been able to play a part in ensuring they were funded. And I don't know where that fits in these various presentations, so I don't know when to ask those questions.
Doesn't fit into the specific department uh, budget presentations per se. One of the things that we're trying to uh, hear from you all and also in our study sessions in October is. What are those priorities from the board that need to be included in the budget? And we've talked a little bit about with our fund downs, where is there an opportunity for us to maybe utilize fund balance, whether it's Services Fund or other fund downs. For some strategic uh, programming, what would that look like and what does the board want to direct those funds to? Uh, is it, it's a question that, you know, if, if it is food security, for example, or, you know, food pantries. Uh, for us to be able to hear that from you and then for us to also be able to come back with. How we fund that through what mechanism, where would that fit into the budget? Uh, so that's a direct way of getting at it, but that's really a question for you all that we need to uh, talk through. Cuz I know there's a lot of priorities and uh, we need to be, we need to make sure we understand what the board actually wants to invest or direct funds to.
Thank you, that's great. And then Steve?
Um, yeah, I was able to listen to last week's hearing and I'm sorry I couldn't make it, um, but I do think that with what Emma's asking. If we do have that analysis, I wanna have the analysis of not just what changed between twenty-five and twenty-six budget. But also a ten-year to see like, how much have we historically given to those um, pantries, witch pantries? In all of those areas, we can see, was this, was this leftover um, kind of like a new expectation after COVID, which we're seeing in a whole lot of these. Uh, nonprofits, um, or is it something that simply we've been doing for thirty years? And if so, where does that money come from in the past as opposed to now, so I would be happy to hear. If we are gonna get into that analysis, so let's look at the overall like ten-year, at least go back ten years. And see, so we can see what happened before COVID and after COVID uh, in that analysis. Cuz that's I think gonna be part of the discussion we should have with any nonprofits, not uh, notwithstanding the, the ones that, that uh, Emma brought up.
Okay, we can make sure to include.
Alright, well, we can breeze through these um, these next couple of slides. These are a list of departments as we would uh, break them out and as we budget them. That are not going to be having individual presentations, um, and that's primarily due to the fact that. That they're not making budget requests, so they're not asking additional FTE or uh, business cases or anything like that, or, or in the event that. There is an ask, it's um, it's something small that we've addressed uh, in some other session, so like. People and Culture was just here talking about, you know, the benefits and stuff like that, so they don't have any other operational budget needs. But not wanting to leave out information on there, every presentation you see for each department will have an overall budget summary. Of revenues and expenditures by category as well as an FTE uh, summary that goes from uh, year to year. And so, we wanted to provide that same information for each of these departments that won't be individually standing up here and presenting to you. And beyond that, unless there's questions about this, I think we can move into the, the direct presentations.
We don't have. We have these slides?
Yeah, it's in the same packet that we.
It just keeps going, like there's one of the.
No, I, I know, but I.
And, and just so you're all aware. Especially the electeds, everyone was given the opportunity to present, um, so we weren't, you know, we didn't just say, oh, you're not asking for anything, so you don't get. Face time with the board, that, they declined, they said that there's really no point to come up and, and say we're not asking for anything.
Reminders to, is all of the requests, particularly for business cases, et cetera, are more. Um, described in those pages toward the front.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yes.
It is.
I'm gonna give this an attempt.
Sorry, presenting the budget list from the county manager's office, just a little bit of a, a, a little bit of interest. For me, but I am uh, supportive of it.
Yeah, then we make it work, just wait.
Uh, yeah, roll up and down, and then I'm not, I'm not gonna drop that mic.
Okay. Well, Kristen and I are very pleased to be kicking off the departmental. Presentations with County Manager's Office, and we're also happy to let you know that there won't be a whole lot of surprises. Whatsoever in these requests, so hooray for us all. Uh, you'll see a little bit in terms of business cases and then really. Conversion of project designated um, staffing in the centralized grant office. To full-time positions, but no additional requests, no CIP, I think we've done plenty of that. And so we'll roll through those now, just wanted to give you that overview. So, um, many of you know what our department generally looks like, our. County executive staff lives in this department, of course, but then also legislative and government affairs, constituent services, community engagement. Support administratively for both the board and County Manager's Office. Our Office of Strategic Partnerships and Resilient Communities, better known as Spark. And then our Strategic Initiatives Team or SIT, you all see them quite a bit when it's time to prioritize things and. Use data and make plans. So these are your key focus areas and what you'll see from the other teams as well as us. Is how we are generally fitting our operations within those focus areas and. In the descriptions that you all have put together previously, so you can understand at least from this and what you'll see. From the other departments, how those things are aligned. And so here, um, really honing in on what it is we do in our office and what we've undertaken. So it's essentially organizational effectiveness, countywide strategy and performance, and then that long-term financial planning. And it gives you a sense of what to expect in each of these. So initially, supporting a transparent, inclusive and future-ready county organization that delivers equitable services relevant to our community. You'll see a couple of our business cases that support that effort. Then our countywide strategy and performance to lead countywide alignment to strategic priorities. Strengthening outcome-based performance measures, reporting for transparency. We've been talking quite a bit about that all year long and will continue to do so. And then our long-term financial planning to align county resources with long-term plans. Community needs assessments and strategic priorities for long-term community resiliency. And that really comes out of really all of the functions in our office as well as how we align across the organization. So you'll see these, um, and how they fit. So you'll see these, um, and how they fit underneath, but our first business case request is a consultant contract for community engagement. This would be a one-time request to develop a countywide community engagement strategy, including reviewing our current efforts across the organization, their effectiveness, and recommended integration of community involvement into all of our projects and programming. We'll talk a lot more about this one. Um, we have noted this as a top priority or priority number two in our programming. This next one is, um, out of the Spark Group Neighborhood Leadership Academy. This is a one-time request to get this program stood up and then twenty-two thousand dollars annually and following years. This is really meant to build upon some of the efforts that that team is putting together for our neighborhood groups in connection through to neighborhood leadership to build those leaders all along the years in professional development and really outreach development in the neighborhoods. And we've noted that as a priority three. And then you'll see here, those project designated staff that I indicated, this is to go toward the centralization of our grants program. This is in line with the multi-year rollout of Spark that we've talked about in recent years. This would leave one project designated person still. This is currently also still supported by ARPA dollars and would be through twenty-twenty-six and, uh, potentially one year beyond. Cost is noted there. And then a business case to marry with what Spark is doing to provide them with general operational dollars. Currently they have none and we have been funding their efforts through operational dollars in the county manager's office. Here is our organizational assessment. I know you all and Dion have had a number of conversations on this one. This is a one-time request to evaluate our organizational performance in several areas focusing on what we can do better, what we do well, what we can build upon, any duplication. What is our customer experience? How can we increase accountability, those items? And I believe that is a top number one priority. And I will call upon Kristen for this one, our, um, public affairs consultant, also a one-time request.
Thanks, Alicia. Yes, this is when we spoke in with the board about in prior study sessions related to the detention center. Um, bringing on a expert in public affairs that will help us identify a strategy to educate and engage with the community around the needs of the detention facility and look towards, um, increasing the understanding for those needs. Framing the issue in a way that, um, others can respond to in a positive manner to help, um, move the needle on public support for any future, um, funding needs that we may identify. So we'll be talking about this one in detail tomorrow. We have several slides. We've been discussing this with Sheriff Claps at length over the last several months around getting this work up and going, um, putting the RFP out as soon as possible if the board is supportive of the funding need for it. And then working over at least all of twenty-six and perhaps into a good portion of twenty-seven to increase community awareness of detention facility needs and start to frame, um, what question would, um, residents in Adams County respond positively to when it comes to funding for facilities around criminal justice and integrated behavioral health projects. Um, and so we've identified two hundred fifty thousand dollars as an appropriate amount for this that would pay for not only the development of the strategy, but probably would also pay for some of the um, messaging work, um, social media and other outlets that we might utilize in order to reach people who are not currently aware of the needs at our detention facility. Um, so that's sort of the general framing. We do have several slides tomorrow where we'll talk to you about, um, the current thoughts on the scope of work, um, to make sure we're all aligned about what this is trying to accomplish and how we'll be going about it.
Thanks, Kristen.
I have a quick question. I, I thought we already did this last year. Um, and when we decided not to go on the ballot, uh, but we paid even before not deciding to go on the ballot, right? There was a whole a whole thing about PR, about the jail. So I'm confused as to what we've already spent money on, what that effort was already like, and what did we get out of that?
Yeah, good question. I've been asking those questions as well because that occurred before I started here. Um, so in twenty twenty-four, there was a contract, uh, to do some of this work and, um, that was that all-in for you campaign. Sorry, the word campaign is wrong, but, um, effort. Um, and so there is sort of an outcome about how many impressions, um, the reach, the, um, engagement with those messages. Uh, what we talked about about three months ago was working to change opinions directly related to the detention facility, um, when we saw our survey results that were or polling results that were reported out in May. And that there is more support around projects that relate to behavioral health and helping those who are incarcerated return back into our community in a manner that's more successful. And so this work would build upon some of the, um, what are the value of your taxpayer dollars and how is that being used? And do you have a positive impression of how we're stewards of those public funds? And then this would get more specific around therefore what messages and what projects respond or create the best response in our community when it comes to asking for, um, some additional funding.
I, I still think it's wise if we're talking about how to best use our dollars to figure out what we already spent, what was already done, what, I mean, I remember we even did polling, we did all sorts of like social media. I feel like this entire effort on the jail thing for the last two years has been a very challenged thing to work through. And I, I don't, I can't support this until we can get arms around what we've already been wasting money on. So I, I'm happy to have this conversation. Um, and kind of get there because I, the fact is, I thought we also decided to be focusing more on on repairs, but it sounds like now we still haven't put that to rest that people still want to go to the ballot for a tax increase. And I thought we, after two polls and two years of talking about this and even a PR campaign, we're still like, I just, I'm confused.
Yeah, good questions. Uh, those are all really slot on questions. We are discussing tomorrow with the board recommendations to move forward with um, some funding recommendations for the repairs and then talking about a longer term multi-year strategy. If the board supports it, if the board does not support it, we'd be happy to hear that feedback tomorrow. Uh, but if you do support, um, a longer term engagement with the community about, um, a major project that is above and beyond those two hundred and seventy million dollars in repairs and renovations, then we recommend that we work with, um, the major public affairs specialists to determine how to move the needle on the polling that we've seen repeatedly where voters don't currently support funding for a project like that.
Yeah, and even the polling said that PR and education wasn't going to change, move the needle that much. So looking forward to the conversation tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, Emma, I'm going to hop in.
Yeah, um, thank you. I really appreciate those questions. Uh, Steve, I agree with where you're coming from. Uh, and I hear you on the disillusionment that occurred that polling said that even more information wasn't going to change your voter's mind, but it also really revealed the the massive disconnect between what we understand the situation to be and what our citizens, uh, understand the situation to be. And so, um, I we are going to have to address that disconnect at some point and probably over a very long period of time in a very long-scale education campaign to bring residents in, the residents have to be brought into that conversation. And so for me, while everything you said is true, also we need a plan to bring in over a longer period of time our residents, our taxpayers into the conversation. So we can have a more cohesive conversation. And that's what I hear this to be, being much more strategic as opposed to the very painful fits and starts that we experienced in twenty twenty-four where we were going to do it, we were going to go to the ballot and then no, we weren't. And then yes, we were, and then no, we're not. But we already paid for the thing. And so we're going to do the education campaign and that was really painful for everyone involved. Uh, but none of that resolved the long-term looming consequences of either a significant renovation, not the repairs we were talking about earlier, renovation of current detention facility or built new. And neither of those, our residents have good informational buy-in on or situational awareness. So something has to be done to have that more long-term dialogue with our residents. From my perspective. And so you're right on twenty twenty-four and also this makes sense. And I would like to hear some more of those strategies. I hear you saying long-term plans, community needs assessment. How would this work and how would this fit with our current just regular government affairs operations?
Yeah. Do you want to see it through that tomorrow?
Either way, we are planning this in detail tomorrow. His own, um, recommendations as well as far as what we might do with this, uh, we do. When we met in May or June, excuse me, to, to have our last update on the detention center, where we landed was on having some sort of education campaign. But what we didn't really resolve was exactly this question of the scope and intent and how it would fit in. Um, we want to make sure that we have a placeholder in our budget if the board decides to move forward with this um, work. And we'll talk about that tomorrow, that we have been very transparent about where those resources are going to come from in the county manager's budget. And that's really the intent of the budget request, because if we decide tomorrow we're moving forward, then we will get, get on it with an RFP and we will, um, afford it off the CMO budget. And so that's really one of the main things we wanted to make sure you all saw is that that's in our budget, um, if we decide tomorrow.
I think we are, um, then we can move on. I think that, uh, one, we've had several several, several discussions, some presentations regarding the detention center is that this is one of the asked by the sheriff's office specifically. Um, is that we continue. I don't even know if it's continue that we really do a engagement portion of it. And I hear you, Steve. I don't, I want to see it was like A R, A, ARO, some somewhere. It was, they were basically a marketing firm and I don't think they got to the root of what voter's sentiment was. The polling did, I mean, on the polling portion, but just messaging alone of what we did didn't get to the root feeling of voters and it didn't educate voters. Um, my other thought was, uh, the detention center like had a lot of legs. I wouldn't say political or even operational. When, when Kristen got on, we were literally in the middle of the alphabet and we had to go all the way back to A and really talk about building and you know, what the needs were, what were the challenges were at the detention center, et cetera, et cetera, all the way down the line. And I think where we landed is what we're seeing now that we, work we're doing, work that we're going to do in twenty twenty-six is really, um, those things were unfunded mandates. So whether it was daylight hours for our staffing movement of prisoners, I mean, all of those different things are things that we're addressing now. We're not taking on the full, we're going to go in and, and do a total remodel and then go back out to the voters. We're literally meeting the demands of what state legislation has put into place. So I want to make sure that we make that distinction of we're not doing a remodel and also potentially pursuing, um, a jail. I think that we have to make that distinction that these are meeting state requirements, um. What was I going to say? Oh, I don't want to also be in a place for that city and county of Denver is seeing themselves in where an elected official hasn't asked and the governing person, whether it's the mayor, the governing body, Florida county commissioners, um, makes the call, yeah, yea or nay, um, just without any sort of other discussions. And we're not on that path, but I want to be very clear that I want to support the sheriff and our sheriff's office to see this through and, and where it leads us is something totally different. I think we all can say that a new jail is keeping the same jail is really throwing good money after bad. Um, just like your house, there comes a point in time, the challenge with the jail is you just don't get to tear down your garage door. It is literally cinder block and steel. Not something, not a weekend project. Um, there's safety in the jail, there's risk. So, um, I'm, I'm, we'll be curious to see if the sheriff likes this living here or if he would like this living in his budget. But nonetheless, the work is the same.
I just.
Yeah.
Great. Other questions about the other business cases? Uh, again, we wanted, we're kind of trying out our first presentation here with you all with the CMO, but our goal is to make sure that you all understand what this is, he has done requests and, and our recommendations will make it a couple of weeks.
Um, I'd like to go back to the first, uh, the community engagement. So is that person they're working with? Who's their target that of, on the staff, who they will be?
So the target on staff, it would be the Spark team and Dennis Swain would really be the leads of the community engagement, uh, work. The Spark team already has as part of their long-term resiliency plan, um, a working group focused on community engagement and Dennis is also leading to the.
No, not, not, not the, not the, the neighbors, neighborhood leadership type.
No, no, no.
Oh, really?
About community engagement.
It's not going to be like across the organization of how to improve community engagement, say for.
Okay, it will be, um, across the organization. There are some targeted areas where we know that we need to, um, lean in and do more assessment, public purchase, one of them, CED's been identified. Um, and, um, that part of the work that Dennis is adapting and that the Spark team has already started. And our goal is to have consultation services to help us with that assessment, with that landscape analysis of community engagement and those recommendations for programming, community engagement efforts, uh, wherever we determine, uh.
So is the idea behind this consultant then to train Spark and Dennis to then they would help facilitate that, help o- other departments as projects come up?
Yes, the community engagement will utilize by countywide, um, by other departments, not just by CMO or Spark.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And how long is that? Like a twelve months, a twelve month contract?
Likely.
Is that a team or for the one, is that a, a firm or is that one individual?
It's likely a firm. I would guess that's what we would end up.
Right. Thank you for, thank you. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Malika, do you have something?
Yeah, I wanted to ask about the, um, the neighborhood leadership academy. It's just something that you guys have just talked about in the past. This is the first time I'm hearing about it. So I was just curious.
Yes. This is a launch after the initial development of the neighborhood groups themselves and having initial meetings and support for the folks who have stepped forward to run those organizations. And this was an identified need that many of them indicated that they could use additional understanding of how to incorporate their neighborhood's information into things that they do and how to do outreach. And so this is really just a civic engagement program and development essentially to build on what we've done.
Who would run this program moving forward? Cause it has twenty-two thousand annually.
Right. This would be within the neighborhood services group within Spark.
Do you know, would they be, how many, how many academies would they run in a year?
I am not certain on that. Um, I can find that out and get more information on that.
It's nine months that obviously be one.
Right.
Likely or six months, four months. I don't, I don't.
It's a good point.
Curious what they're.
Or how many people are we actually talking about? Right. Like who's, how many people are going to be impacted by this? Like, can we train twenty people a year, fifty people a year, a hundred people a year?
Right. Uh, well, currently we have something like eight or ten folks practicing or getting into their neighborhood outreach programming. Um, and we anticipate that will build from there. We have had a lot more interest lately since folks have been able to get into the community and talk more about what they can expect from these programs. And, and then there is the funding aspect too, where they have the mini grants that can support some of their efforts. So there's a, a bit more interest. So we would anticipate more than that, but I'll get more of the mechanics of the program that they've indicated.
Be helpful just to. Yeah. And then my other question was for Spark. What does? Yeah, and then my other question was for Spark. What does Spark General Operations be? What does that go for?
Yes, that is in our front packet, um but it's essentially all things that you would imagine staffing a team would include. It is. Um. So uh what is the word I'm looking for? Educational support, um training for those groups. You know, office equipment, all of the things that lift up. A team that we just didn't fund because they were all funded by ARPA dollars for their salaries. And so it. We were able to then have an admin portion that supported folks with those dollars going away in the next year or so. If we want to support that team generally, some sort of general operation support will be helpful. Is that the amount we necessarily need? We'll look at that much more closely, but.
And then we're looking at converting the two.
Yep.
Right, compliance specialized.
There's currently three that are supported by ARPA funds and they would still be supported by those dollars. But they would then become full-time equivalent because we have developed those programs for the long term.
Okay, so. Is the full one hundred and twelve thousand per position impacting us or how much of ARPA is covering this?
We expect that we can recapture that full amount from ARPA, but what would impact us is. That over and above amount, I think it was roughly nine thousand dollars a year for retirement contributions.
Okay. And then so this would technically increase your FTE of this department by two.
Correct, because it would be FTE versus project designated.
Okay. Yes, and uh and so when we talked about being neutral, maybe we'll find. Somewhere else that we won't fill a vacancy or something to cover the two added. Right? I mean, like, because we're, we want to be neutral.
Right.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven. So if we add.
Do the best possibility, right?
To take two away.
I'm not sure that's we're gonna agree, we'll see where we can.
Well, I mean, I think it's important that we're very clear in what we're trying to accomplish because. Yeah, yeah, because and and yes, I'm not saying we're going to be perfect over the next few years.
Yes.
Um but you know, we have to be really thoughtful. Every FTE counted.
That's right.
Is one that we need to make up for somewhere else in the calculation.
Right.
Organization, if you will.
And we could choose to phase these as well. Um if we decide to do one instead of two. If we decided to keep them PJF through the remainder of. The ARPA program that would be at the end of next year and rethink it for two thousand twenty-seven, we could do any of those things. It's fairly flexible. Um we would like to retain the talent, and so this is really more of a retention planning exercise as well, even though we know that we'll have. Grant support for those positions.
Right, cool.
And for all of the FTE requests that you'll be hearing, that is something worth thinking about, right? And maybe the recommendation that we land on is. Is a PJF, can it stay a PJF longer?
Yes.
Um or does it need to become a permanent FTE, which does add to our operating? Any FTE that we approve does. Decrease the capacity across the organization for new FTE. So we have a very limited number of FTE that we probably can't absorb new FTE. Um and so as we're looking at all of the requests, we're taking that into account of filling one here means probably one less somewhere else. And where do we need to really? Uh make those decisions. Alicia's point about retaining talent, you know, PJF positions are for employees more likely. Um not to retain as they get closer to the end of their project period or grant period, but that may be fine, you know, program may be rolling off and that's, that's. Appropriate. So that's something that we uh definitely want to hear feedback on, and we'll be making recommendations with all of that in mind.
Well, and and I I want to clarify, like, I'm not trying to feel heartless in these conversations. One of the things I I come from healthcare. And healthcare is very, you know, all about the dollars. And I was doing a project once where. I had um technical improvements to an application that we were using um to pay for those technical improvements, I had to cut FTE for my team.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's how healthcare works. You don't.
Right.
Increase FTE just because you want to. Um and if you want to pay for something else, you cut it with FTE. So.
Right.
Um it's just kind of the the background that I come from. And so when we talk about trying to remain flat, that does. Mean hard decisions. And so we have to be really thoughtful. If we approve these two FTE to be the full-time equivalents. That means we have to make hard decisions somewhere else. And putting that in pers- perspective allows me to realize, okay, how important? Are these FTEs to have to cut somewhere else? And so that's that give and take that is is not fun. It is not. Anything any of us want to even have a conversation about, but it's also the truth of where we're at.
No, that makes complete sense. I don't think anyone views anyone as heartless here. We're all, we're all in a tough spot, you know?
Yeah.
Um and frankly, we're going to have conversations too in the coming weeks about what level of experience or service level. Can we expect when we're maybe retaining a flat position in some areas? And even having to cut in other areas, what can we live with? Or what can our community live with if we have a reduced level of service in some areas? If we're going to prioritize. Having, you know, a stable level of service or increased level of service in a priority area.
I just want to say that, you know, we're fully aware, you're going to hear a lot of FTE requests in the next couple of days. You heard the number, it's more than a hundred requested in this year's budget. I think it's also important for you to know that those could feel uncoordinated with the with the presentations you had today. But we think it's really important for you to see all of it. So you can appro, how can you prioritize if you don't know what else is on the table? And so we still encourage our directors to bring forward everything they'd originally asked. They submit budget, the budget entries are due July first. So think about. The amount of information we all had available to us in June compared to today. Our insight into revenues, our insight into how uh property tax relief will affect future years has gotten much better in those months. And so. Rather than say, go back to directors and say, cut everything at half before you go ask for the uh FTS, you're gonna hear all of it. Um and that, I think, will feel a little uncomfortable for all of us. Um and so that's why we wanted to spend this first day with you so that you knew. You're seeing exactly what they asked for. A few of them have changed their um their requests candidly, even some have changed them just very recently. Because they too are getting more information all the time, conditions change. Uh but that was done, you know, most of the time that was done because they raised their hand and said, I'd like to pull back this one. Uh but you're going to hear a lot of FTE requests in the next couple of days.
Other questions? I want to say that we have covered most things, but you can see. The dollar amounts represented by primarily those business cases. And then here are our positions.
Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
So what's the timeline for the uh, so the organizational assessments?
So if approved, we are already starting to scope out the organizational assessment and. Probably solicit uh contractor to begin the organizational assessments by January uh. With the budget, with the approved budget to get that role. And it will take place, it'll probably take, I'm gonna guess, several months uh beginning of the year to complete.
Organizational. It'll be in places, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I think that was. Thank you, that was it.
This gives you our position summary as it stands today, and we have some vacant positions we are working to fill currently. Uh so you'll hear more about that, but we're actively working in that space, so nothing is growing moss under its feet in our world. And if we've answered all the questions, that is our presentation. If y'all think of things later, just shoot us a note.
Know we will.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I do want to add, I should have said earlier, we are providing with the department presentations, um. Templates for you all to um ask questions, take notes, that we would love to collect from you, and we're taking notes as we go, but we just want to make sure that you have an opportunity to give feedback. For all of the department uh presentations and really just so as we're narrowing down for recommendations that we have all of that feedback. Um and also just acknowledge this is a significant amount of time that you all have invested in our budget process this year. I know everybody's very busy, our team is very busy, but you know, at the beginning of the summer. My request to the budget team is, you know, this is a new thing for us um to do this this way and to build out a process that's transparent. And that you're all able to see all of the um requests, all of the information about, you know, economic outlook. Um and be really informed, which is what we want. Um so feedback on the process, we definitely welcome, because this is our first year just really trying to go through this process, and I'm sure. Your CFO will refine it there in place, but any feedback you all have. Um we have a couple of.
Brought it up.
Final list that we will be hopefully narrowing down to final, final this week.
Okay.
Sending you all the good energy.
Uh hi.
But that's where we.
He has it. Steve, you show up and then your request disappears. So thank you, Lindsay. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I think, thank you. Um I think the uh it the fact that you guys kind of alluded to, and I love this preparation, by the way, it's outstanding. Uh that we're going to have a hundred FTE requests. I I gotta tell you, if some, if I'm going to get a list, I would want to see them all together. Like at the end, like a summary, almost like where we can look at all of them and just like, all right, here's the hundred, here's the departments that are asking from. And then also on the next tab or something, here's the uh, here are the uh FTE changes that were made over the last five to ten years for each department. I mean, when we see that, you know, some departments have already gotten ten or twenty in prior years or even this year, uh I think it's good for us to kind of be able to see that.
Yeah, and in your binders, you should have all of the FTE requests. Um also, I I can, we can add in the part you just said, Steve, of of prior years, I think we shared. Earlier this summer, um what.
Perfect.
Which FTEs, but yes, that's.
Yeah, it just helps us know that like if we've been neglecting certain departments or not, but I mean, I know we've worked really hard this year to try to help support. The sheriff's office already quite a bit. And I know the year before, the two or three years before that, we worked really hard to get uh human services, whatever they asked for. Um and I know that those are the, those are the two that the departments that I don't always get what they want are usually cited. So I think it just helps us get the big picture.
Absolutely.